Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Some old.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We'll start with public input one. Can you put on public input one? All right. We'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the superintendent's report.
Okay. And we're going to be beginning, we're going to change order and do diversity and inclusion because one of our guests needs to leave immediately. And that will end us with our fabulous teacher presentation. So if Mr. Reynosos would join me at the podium? Ms. Reynosos and I are chairing the Diversity and Inclusion Committee this year. We just wanted to give the Board of Education an update on that committee. And let me start. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee, Ms. Reynosos has really taken the lead on this committee. I have just been her moral support. The committee is really a subcommittee of the wellness so that we did not have to go through the process of establishing a charter. And we really do believe it is very carefully linked with the Wellness Committee and their goals. The board goal for this year was established to establish a district-based Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee for the purposes of creating a diverse and inclusive school community with culturally responsive practices. Some of the populations, but not all of the populations that we've been thoughtful about are our English language learners, our students with disabilities, our economically disadvantaged, and those of our population of color, which establish over 25% of our students here at SAG-Harbor. Now, that is not alone. There are other populations that we look at, but that was the beginning of our thought process. And we've had much input from families privately, families who have come to the committee to report out, families that have spoken to us in the administrative and in the guidance offices. So we've had quite a bit to work with to begin. And I'm going to have, after we've kind of started getting our feet wet, Ms. Reynosos led the committee in the whys of why the committee had the membership. So I'm going to let her take you through that.
So we've had three sessions so far, three committee meetings so far. And one of the first conversations that took place is the why, which is what brings us all to the table. Right now, we have a membership of about 15 who participate. And the first session that we met, we talked about what are some things that are glaring to us that we can work on and improve as a district. So that's where this list was generated from. So addressing the achievement gap, how we might go about doing something like that as a district, inclusive language on school forms because the thought is out there that maybe they're a little bit dated, train faculty and staff on diversity and inclusion, more diverse and inclusive community efforts, setting expectations at the start of the school year to draw all people into the school community and what that could look like, helping students cross culture by facilitating personal connections across all students. That's something that came to the table by a student that attends Pearson currently. So things like special education, the E&amp;L population, socioeconomic lines, and across academic pursuits. The idea that human contact and connection can prevent depression. Set the culture to make it clear when you enter a building, classroom, or discussion that the district is welcoming and supportive to all. And how do we help students without the opportunities, parents who can be more involved, or we can have them become more involved? And then offering support groups and identifying needs. So this, again, as a membership, is something that we discussed around table. Understanding before action. So this comes from the idea that there are a lot of people who feel that we can do things differently, we should do things differently, but we really want to be conscientious of how we go about doing that and understanding, of course, that education is key. So we've actively pursued attending trainings and workshops, professional development opportunities, which is the list that you're looking at here. Things that we could do to attend so that our language is knowledgeable, we're coming from experience, from things that we've attended, current things that we've attended. So poverty simulation is one of those things. Mrs. Graves invited me to attend a superintendent's workshop in Suffolk County in Halpawg on equity, access, and the power of the changing demographic. Bobby Cohen, one of the secretaries at the elementary school, attended a diversity and inclusion training. And then safe partner sharing challenges.
So who are the safe? What we've asked is we feel like we have a lot of experts out there already, and we can't do this alone. So very often you have folks come and they say they have a great idea, like, you know, if we did this, things would be better for our fragile populations. But a great idea, if you speak to an expert in the field, might say, maybe, but here's another thought about that. Or, yeah, that's a great idea, here's a constructive way to think about that. So the committee has taken the charge to invite in those safe partnerships and have them provide their expertise to us so that by the time we reach the point in the springtime when we can come back to the board and report on priorities and on initiatives, that we've also become experts, we hope, in, number one, who are partners that are already doing the work so we're not reinventing the wheel, but also so we can really make the best recommendations to the board. And so here are some of the safe partnerships that have come in. We've already had, sitting at the table, parents that have had really thoughtful concerns and said, and we've had students that have sat at the table at the Diversity and Inclusion meetings that have said, you know what, this was challenging for me as a student or as a parent, you know, going through SAG-Harbor schools. And then we also have realized that there are community groups out there that are already doing really wonderful work for some of our more fragile populations and some of our diverse populations that we can partner with and we don't have to reinvent the wheel with them. And we can also support them. So we have students that do great work here, volunteering in the community, that one of the things that came up in our, not tonight's meeting, but our last meeting, is we had a student that said, you know, sometimes we get into our little group and we never move to the next lunch table. We never move to the other study hall. We never move to the other class. So like students that head to their current technical education at postes, I don't get to meet them because they leave for a good part of the day. Or students that are in sports, I may not get to meet them. So she said, if we had partnerships where I could go out and I have to do X amount of volunteer hours, let me volunteer in places where I get to meet my friends or I can support and I can broaden my understanding of the needs out there. So this evening, we had Ola come in and talk about some of the challenges for students and families on the East End of Long Island, but also some of the practices that have worked, going individually to school districts to find out what their practices were, what their cultures were, and how to build those strengthening apparatuses. We also had the retreat come in with Helen Actonson-Barnes. She'll be talking to us tonight about fragile populations and how we can help them and support them, but also how our students can grow stronger before they leave our doors and, you know, face challenging relationships. Some of the other ones are John Germain Library also already provides bilingual support in the library systems. They provide library cards at the food pantry so families know that's available to them. The Children's Museum of the East End has daycare that's already available. They have meal programming. They have, they have the Children's Museum itself, but they also provide parent training, legal services. So some of those things are already established. The PTA, PTSA can be a wonderful outreach program for some of our families. HUGS and the Long Island Teen Institute can be another one. So Safe in SAG-Harbor, the LGBT community, and then we have our own clubs that are right here. So the partnerships are there. And again, doing something alone may not be the best move forward, but building these partnerships. So they are going to be coming to our meetings as we move along. And for a moment, I'm just going to take a moment and hear from one of our partnerships. Helen, get over here.
Well, I thought you were going to start with the video, but I'll...
Yeah, we'll start with the video. And can you also bring up your students?
Sure. They're going to come up.
Oh, they are?
And, but we'll go ahead with the video and then I'll come up.
Okay.
You would never think that we, my daughter and I were emotionally as in love verbally as we used to.
You turn that up.
I was born and were a child in my arms and I thought he was going to shoot me. I had a totally three-year-old girl. He was charming. We had two beautiful children. I was, you know, breastfeeding one of my babies at that time. It was very, very...
Sort of make people believe that there was nothing happening in the home. The straw for me was when my kids were witness to the abuse. I would remember crying at night in the shower when they would go to sleep and just going to the beach and screaming at God and saying, why, 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 why is this happening? Like, help. Because you feel almost so alone. And so I would just pray to get me out. That was it. Get us out safe without my kids being damaged. Heard the retreat definitely was the answer to my prayers.
So the retreat is the only domestic violence agency that services the East End. We provide shelter, services, and safety to families of domestic violence.
My husband was just having a meltdown, getting angry, screaming at us, a common thing. Unfortunately, this time, he had gone downstairs and come back up with a gun. I said, are you going to kill me? And he said, I don't know what I'm going to do. He was getting the bullets. I grabbed her, got out the door. I ended up in court the next day getting an order of protection. A woman came to me as I waited in the court to get the order of protection. And she said, hi, my name is Wendy. I'm from the retreat. And I'm here for you today. And I thought, I don't know where you came from. I don't know who you are. I don't even know what the retreat is. But I'm not letting go of you.
My husband had been for many, many years very emotionally and psychologically abusive towards me. I was name called. I was called stupid, fat, ugly. I couldn't do anything correct. But when it crossed over to my little girl who was eight years old then, I thought, you know what? As a mother, it is my responsibility to stand up for this little girl. And that's when I decided to call the police, seek out the retreat, and ask for help.
Good afternoon, the retreat. How can I help you?
Our clients can get services from us that include counseling, advocacy, shelter, prevention education, financial empowerment. We help some of our clients with housing and we help them find jobs because what we want them to do is to be able to access support, heal, and reestablish their lives.
I bought my home and I have owned my home since June of 2014. And it's just been amazing.
The retreat let me have my wings to fly. They gave me my mother back. So they gave me this amazing, brilliant, smart, creative mother who I knew was deep down inside her. And they just, they brought her back to life. So...
They brought me back.
Awesome. So we can go to the other...
He's on the alternate.
There we go.
I tell you, you've got a great team here.
So thank you so much for inviting me here this evening. I want to say that, I think that that's a brand-new video. We have a number of board members, community members, who clearly had services from the retreat. We, it's harder to get teens or people who are more vulnerable. These women, one of them was the president of our board for a number of years, gone through, gotten a lot of support, and got to the place where they could be public about their situation. But certainly, this is an issue that affects young people three times as frequently as it does adults. And it's certainly not just women who are victims, but men, transgender population, et cetera. How do I, is this the remote?
Oh.
There you go. So I just want to give you a quick overview. We're so glad to be partnering with SAG-Harbor Schools and our prevention efforts. So domestic violence, really important that you understand what we're talking about. Technically, domestic violence is defined as a pattern of coercive behavior in which one person hurts the other person as a form of control. And control is really the key issue here. When I talk with students, I just describe it as, you know, one person in a relationship hurting the other person in order to get their way. All right? But fundamental question then is, do all couples agree? Do all people in relationships agree? No, absolutely not. And I often elicit from students, you know, what are some typical everyday kinds of disagreements that people in relationships have all the time? Peanut gallery?
Um, arguing over where to eat.
Yeah. Where to eat, what to have for supper. Is it, you know, how will we spend this vacation? Or do we go to the party or not? Or is it too hot in this room? Or is it too cold? You know, really basic, everyday things. And, you know, is it okay that people disagree? Absolutely. People are different. People like different things. But what's not okay is when one person hurts the other person in order to get their way or establish power. And so, you know, one of the things we work on with students is, you know, working through compromise and agreeing to disagree in different strategies for resolving conflict. And just recognizing from the get-go that you're not going to always agree and it's not your job to make the other person in that relationship, you know, go along with what you think is right. Because there are different ways of looking at things. So we, you know, domestic violence is sort of the traditional term that we've used, but more recently intimate partner violence, term used by the CDC because it recognizes dating violence, not just married couples living together. And term I prefer, relationship abuse, because this is a phenomenon that doesn't just happen among, in romantic relationships, but it can happen with elder abuse, it can happen with friendships. And certainly, you see, you know, the middle school phenomenon of mean girls, you know, one person telling everybody else what they can wear, who they can sit with at lunch, how they should live their lives. Or gangs, you see this phenomenon as well. So it's important to understand the dynamic. When we work with students, sometimes we do activities like this where we have the students brainstorm different types of abuse. And this activity is important because we really want to emphasize that, number one, abuse is not just physical in relationship. What we're talking about could be sexual abuse or emotional abuse, financial abuse, digital or cyber abuse. Whole range of tactics that a person could use to hurt the other person. The other, point number two is abuse, you know, it's not just the extreme abuse that we're talking about. There's a whole range of unhealthy behaviors. And often, we like to use the term unhealthy relationship rather than abuse or violence because people will draw away and not see themselves as part of this. These are things that can be common in all sorts of relationships. And we want to nudge everybody toward the most positive, healthy relationship that they can have. And finally, the last point is, we want to look at abuse in context. It's not just the push that's the issue or the specific behavior that's the issue. It's the context of the controlling behavior on one partner toward the other. So it's the imbalance, it's the one person who's in charge and constantly telling the other person what to do. And one of the specific examples, or one specific example is a situation I know of where one partner, one woman was being abused by her husband, and he would typically take off his wedding ring prior to assaulting her. So after a while, it got to the point where all he needed to do was kind of play with his ring. And she got the message that, oh, all right, this is escalating, I'm going to calm things down, and basically give in to whatever partner wanted because of that threat, that implied threat. And it's really important, sort of implications of this for school and for people working with people who might be victims of abuse, is that, you know, the experts have encouraged people to shy away from zero tolerance policies at school because while you want to be even-handed in how you address issues, you don't want to look at any one incident of abuse out of context. And somebody might have pushed somebody else, but what happened first? What was the context that led up to that behavior? Really important to consider. And I think certainly at Pearson, where it's a small school and you guys have a history of knowing who's who, you know, you tend to look at the whole picture. And that's very important. All right. So red flags, one of the activities that we do in one of our workshops, or a couple of our workshops, really looks at these red flags or warning signs, which aren't always so obvious to teens or adults. Some of the red flags, major red flags, include jealousy, lack of balance in the relationship, control, you know, is one person constantly texting the other person to find out where they are, who they're with, or what they're wearing. For teens who are just starting out in relationships, it can be very tricky to understand what's a healthy boundary and what's inappropriate. So these are red flags that we encourage students to look out for. We encourage teachers and staff and parents, families to look out for them as well. Okay. Intimate partner violence, domestic violence is really widespread. And certainly, it's just as common out here on the East End of Long Island as it is nationally. And it's tricky for us to get the word out, though. And I don't think people realize how common it is. And why do you think that is? Why do you talk about it? Yeah, people aren't talking about it, exactly. And, you know, the rates among teens are three times as high as rates among adult populations. But people aren't talking about, and why aren't people talking about it? Ideas?
They're embarrassed.
Yeah.
They feel like it's their fault.
Mm-hmm. They're blaming themselves, they're ashamed, embarrassed. Any other thoughts?
Reasons why people don't speak up. Don't want to get hurt anymore.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're afraid of retaliation. And it's really important to understand that leaving isn't always the answer or the solution for a victim of abuse. They say that the first, studies show that the first 72 hours after a person leaves an abuser are the most dangerous period of time because they're subject to the greatest violence or abuse at that volatile time because the partner is often sort of thinking, well, if I can't have the person, then nobody can. So it's really not, there's not an easy solution. And often, people looking at a problem from the outside will say, oh, well, you know, they should just leave. And it doesn't always resolve the issue. But there are many, many reasons. It can be hard for targets to speak up. You mentioned fear, shame, abuse can seem normal, self-blame. For teens, desire for independence and not wanting to have parents or teachers involved or, you know, well, I'm not going to allow you to date anybody. As a sort of a response, might drive, especially teens, underground, not wanting to share what's going on. Lack of support, concern for money, children. Another big issue, speaking of communities that are more at risk, people might fear exposure. So for example, let's say you're an undocumented immigrant, it might be hard to reach out for support because you might fear that you could run up against immigration issues or your partner might turn you in. So that could be a real barrier to getting help. Likewise, members of LGBT community might fear being outed by a partner. So there's that risk of exposure that can come along. Okay.
Do you have a sense of, those are the stats for kind of abuse of an adult, but how about children that are victims of abuse, meaning, you know, job abuse, sexual abuse? Do you have a sense of kind of how much the population is impacted on?
It's a hard number to assess because there's so much secrecy and people not wanting to share. The conservative estimates show that more than one in 10 teens, that's from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the YRBS, has been a victim of serious physical assault, and another one in 10 victim of serious sexual assault. So that's together, combined, closer to one in five. But they do say that teens and young people, 24 to, 16 to 24, are three times as likely as the general population to experience abuse in a relationship or be subjected to abuse in a relationship because, you know, people that age, it makes sense, people that age are dating more often than other people. So it's something that to address really early on, and we're really grateful to be able to bring it up in school. One last reason, people might stay with a partner or not want to report it is what we call the cycle of violence. And this diagram just illustrates how typical it is for relationships, even an abusive one, to start out happy, then there'll be some abusive incident, there'll be a conflict. But after the blow-up or explosion, it'll go back to calm and happy again. So, you know, oh, you know, some sort of apology or backhanded apology, oh, I really love you, or, you know, all couples fight, or it wasn't as bad as you said it was, we'll work this out. And the person will want the abuse to stop, but not the relationship to end. So it's very common for people to remain really committed even to an unhealthy or abusive relationship. And so that's really important to know, you know, as you are supporting students or people in your school or school families, to understand that, you know, just saying, oh, the first thing you need to do is leave or exit that relationship. Because that often can be counterproductive and drive the person back to the abusive partner or drive the, you know, suppress what they want to say or feel unsafe getting help. And certainly at the retreat, you know, we feel that our role is to support the person wherever they're at. It's not to say, you know, you have to leave right away. It's here's what could happen if you stay. Here, here's, you know, safety planning strategies that you can take. You know, what do you feel is right for you? Because as we said before, also, it's not always, leaving does not always end the abuse. So the retreat provides a whole range of services, not just the shelter, but we have 24-hour hotline, bilingual, English, Spanish. We have legal... if you stay, here's, you know, safety planning strategies that you can take, you know, what do you feel is right for you? Because as we said before also, it's not always, leaving does not always end the abuse. So the retreat provides a whole range of services, not just the shelter, but we have 24-hour hotline, bilingual English, Spanish. We have legal advocates who will accompany people to court to get stay-away orders, orders of protection. These are available not just to married couples, but to people in dating relationships. They just changed that law about five years ago or so, so you can access those orders of protections as a minor, as a teenager in a dating relationship. Let's see, counseling, that's our main service, so most people who come to us, come to us for counseling services and live in the community and sometimes they come if they were subjected to abuse in the past. And this is for both sexual assault and domestic violence abuse. We're just expanding our counseling services to include bullying and abuse prevention, so this will be available for teens and if they feel like they want somebody specialized in these issues, they can come to us. And it can be helpful to refer students out if they're afraid of confidentiality. We live in a small community, so it can sometimes be helpful to find somebody else who's specialized in these issues to talk to. Alright, so I just want to briefly say we have a number of prevention programs and we've been, ever since I started working at the retreat over 10 years ago, we, I've been coming into Pearson and we have, the programming has evolved, I think a little with the times, but they include Healthy Relationships Don't Hurt, which is our three-to-four session program, which we meet in the high school at the, in the health class. These are all programs that we do, not just at Pearson, but across the east end of Long Island, so Montauk to Hampton Bays and the North Fork as well. So Healthy Relationships Don't Hurt is our high school program. Respect in Relationships is the middle school program. Hands Are Not For Hitting is an elementary school program. The Retreat Teen Leadership Project is a community service opportunity for teens who might want to get more involved and I have a couple of teens here tonight, so you guys can come on up. I want to say very quickly, the Navigating Consent program is a workshop that we piloted here at Pearson with the senior class. We just started it last year, last fall, at Southampton High School and it was a project that one of Pearson students put together, Julia Mascali, who's a Pearson grad. But we've got Ella Nibb and Emily Hallick here who just, you know, thought you guys could say a couple of things about the Teen Leadership Project and we can answer any questions, so.
Okay, so I've been with the Teen Leadership Project since I was a freshman and when I was a freshman, it was really interesting because I got to work with a lot of Pearson seniors and some people from East Hampton and people from Ross and it was really, it's very informative and an important time in like a teen's life that they need this kind of education. So you really kind of get a name to a lot of the things in a relationship that you need to learn how to avoid and like what, you know, this is basically preventative education, which is probably the most important thing in this kind of information. So when I was a freshman, I got to meet some people from East Hampton, there was one guy I remember that didn't speak English very well at all and he was there, it seemed like maybe to be like a volunteer and I remember his name was George, I kind of remember him a little bit. And basically, at the end of the program, we get to put together a project that we kind of fashion ourselves, like an independent project, and he kind of worked with Helen, I think, to create some kind of information or education that was in Spanish, so it was translated from English to Spanish and that's so important, that's becoming a bigger problem because people in our community who maybe are undocumented or don't understand English as well don't have that information or support out there, so getting a retreat's message to them is really important. So, yeah, that's some of the important stuff.
Also, I think with the retreat, one of the most beneficial things is really focusing that abuse isn't just the extreme end of the spectrum. You kind of see it spread out where it could be something that you might not consider abuse, but you realize that it's an unhealthy behavior and you shouldn't be kind of tolerating it. And so a lot of times when we learn about it, we don't really see it in like the teen relationships, but the program is focused specifically on seeing it in teen relationships, so I think it really helps so you understand, so you can help yourself, but also so you can help others because you learn warning signs that you would normally see, but you wouldn't realize that this is like an unhealthy behavior. And I think that that's important for everyone to really know.
Thank you guys. Yeah, we've had some students do some terrific projects and we love, you guys did the art show a couple of years back, which was terrific. We've had students, one student, her project was healthcare providers and presenting to them and she helped present up at Stony Brook Medical School a couple of years in a row. So we've had some students do some really cool stuff with us. So we really value your partnership and, you know, thank you for helping us with this work.
Helen, one of the, at our subcommittee tonight, one of the, our school psychologist spoke about students, Pearson students coming back from college and from the world, talking about navigating consent, how that gave them a voice. Could you just briefly talk about what navigating consent is?
Navigating consent was, is the assembly workshop that Julia Mascali, who's a Pearson grad, helped us develop as a prevention messaging to prevent sexual abuse and sexual assault. So it includes awareness component, bystander intervention strategies and understanding more about, you know, how you can help keep yourself safe, somebody else safe, and set boundaries.
And specifically for our seniors rising into college and into the world?
Yes, yes. So they helped us pilot that the last couple of years and we expanded it this last fall to Southampton High School, so we're really glad to develop that program and certainly it's timely, there's a lot of interest these days in that issue, so.
Excellent. Does any board, do any board members have any questions for Helen? Thank you so much.
Glad to be here, thank you for being here.
Just have two more slides.
Oh, and we're starting our program this week, so if anybody has college students or high school students who might be interested in Teen Leadership Project, we start this Wednesday, we have a seven-week weekly training series, so we're looking for new members.
Thank you, Helen. Just to quickly close on the work that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee is doing, so looking at culturally responsive practices, so these are examples of things that we've put into place. School messaging being moved to bilingual, school forms being moved from he, she to student and instead of mother, father, parent guardian, so we're hoping to make that universal language district-wide. We also have in place now a bilingual translator who supports both the elementary school and middle and high school at no additional cost. And then last, again, just keeping the idea that slow is fast, we want to be really mindful of what we recommend to the board and what we would like to see put in place, starting with the end in mind. So the Diversity and Inclusion Committee continue our understanding, continuing our growth and understanding before action, meeting, listening and learning from our safe partnerships, so like from that list that Mrs. Graves shared, building safe partnerships and learning about the needs of all of our district population and always working towards the Board of Education goal, that being establishing a district-based Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee for the purpose of creating a diverse and inclusive school community with culturally responsive practices. Any questions?
I have a question about staff training that is not related to the committee, but related to something you had in an earlier slide, which is, do all employees have some level of staff training to support, you know, treating diverse populations with respect? Meaning, everybody from an in-classroom teacher to the bus driver, to the person down in the cafeteria? I'm just thinking about all the points of contact that our students have and it's not just the traditional teacher contact, but from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, there's many employees. And so I'm just curious about what we're doing as a district to ensure that all of our employees are welcoming to every person in the student population.
That's something that is not in place, so it's not a given that everybody who is employed at Saad Harbor Schools is getting that kind of training and that's the thing that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee is looking at. Something where that is in place and it becomes a standard.
Every teacher has to have dignity for all.
The DSA.
The DSA training. And at the start of the year, we had Minerva Perez come in and speak to all of the teachers. And, I'm sorry, every staff member except for the bus drivers, they were not available, so every custodian, every secretary, all of the teaching assistants and all the teachers were there to listen to Minerva and to a student that spoke about their experiences. But that's not, and then we are systematically going through, one of the presentations was on epilepsy and then we did presentations on students that have asthma, so we're trying to move through all of those special populations, but it's.
But making it mandatory, is that what you're saying, where it's like a mandatory type of training that somebody might, so sensitivity type issues?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't suggesting we do it, I mean, personally I think it's a good idea, but it's something that I guess the administration would come to us with the suggestion. I was just curious what we currently do. I was not aware, I understand the teachers went through some, but I was just thinking, again, from the point, because I hear from parents about different points of contact during the day and sometimes feel like their child isn't always treated with respect, particularly if they're part of a fragile population, and several of those instances are not in the classroom, but they are with an employee. So that's why, that kind of generated, it's why I'm raising the question.
Well, that is something that was brought up as an important piece.
Right.
Anybody else?
Other questions?
I just had a quick question. Could you explain me the poverty simulation?
Oh, I did not attend that, Sue Duff attended it.
Oh, okay.
So this is something that was offered through Matatag School District and it's a series, it's a two-part series and I believe, if I may speak on her behalf, although like I said, I didn't intend, it's just the idea, again, paired with sensitivity and exposure. So the idea of what a day in the life of so-and-so might be like.
And they actually, and we had our registrar also attend because that's the person that's first on the ground, meeting folks that are coming in and, for example, finding forms and that kind of thing can be so challenging. So the superintendent that was offering that training, I said, who else would you recommend sending? She said, absolutely your first point of contact, because why can't you find that form? So, and we were really fortunate, that first point of contact, she said, I'll go, absolutely. She was really ready and she said, she came back and said it was so interesting, there's still one more, there's a second part, part two, but you actually simulated what it was like to be a single mother whose car broke down and, you know, like, they had simulations and each person had to take a different role, the grandmother, the 17-year-olds, so they played actual roles and then they had to switch off and play other roles and everybody had different aspects of living in that situation. And there was disabling conditions and, you know, where funding streams in the cutoff or addiction or whatever things that held people in poverty and the bridges out of poverty were also offered. So there was also support mechanisms for, now how do we reach, what are the things to hold people in poverty simulations and what are the things that can reach them out? So both of our staff members that went said it was really, really worthwhile and then they'll go back for another simulation, which is, again, hopefully something they can turn key train for our own staff and we can bring here.
On a very small scale, it's something that we spoke about at morning program when we were doing the Mitten Line. So it was discussed in a very obvious, age-appropriate way, but just again, like Ms. Graves says, in a way where it's like, okay, you have your car and you need to get to the doctor, but your car broke down and the money you were gonna use for groceries is now going towards the car that needs to take you to work, that takes your children to.
That was actually really helpful.
Yeah.
A certain child who came to me was like, oh, now I get it.
Yeah, yeah, there's the poverty.
Katie, could you share the stat that you shared with us earlier tonight in the Diversity Committee about the poverty, because that was really surprising to me. In our district, you mentioned that, I think you said a quarter?
Yeah, yeah. Last year it was about, it was 19% and now it's about 24% are in, are free or reduced lunch poverty. And that is folks that have actually.
Applied.
Applied.
Yeah.
So I think, and to be in poverty, it's not hard because it's, you know, it's around 44,000 for a family of four, because making ends meet in today's population is really hard.
But I think that's really important for all of us to consider because I think there's so always an assumption that we're in a community of wealth, where while there's a lot of high wealth, we cannot ignore that it's a growing number of folks who are really struggling and I think there are people even above that number who are struggling.
That's 24, starting around 24% of the students in the district.
Families, one out of four families, that's the families themselves. And one of the, one of the members of the Inclusion Committee, which I'm very impressed by this committee, said, you know, I can afford the teacher gift, you know, we're asking $20, everybody chicken $20, she said, but if my mom has four children and is a single mom and is working, you know, as a nurse and also has to buy, you know, Christmas gifts and has to get to wherever, all of a sudden you're talking about, you know, close to $100 plus all the incidental gifts, now we're really tapping out a family. So those thoughtful things was something she asked for a diversity and inclusion to bring, you know, to be thoughtful about. So it's really interesting, I think diversity and inclusion, what folks have brought to the table hasn't been just, you know, those of color, but of poverty and of, you know, these other things that are, that are very challenging in the school setting, yeah.
So Katie, just going off of that point, you know, I think the elementary school does an extraordinary job, let's see about the holidays, with the Mitten Line, there's opportunities where they really support families of the children of that age. Are we doing enough for our, you know, middle schoolers and our high schoolers where in those family settings, they don't have those kind of institutionalized programs we've implemented and also expenses start to go up? I think about school supplies, I mean, if you're, one in four families are in poverty in this district, I mean, I know for each kid, when I had all three kids in the school district, I could spend 80 bucks walking into school per child, right? And then the teacher wants to know why each, in each subject, you don't have a notebook and a this and a, you know, the whole laundry list. And then I think about the trips that we have that are voluntary, but are very hard pills to swallow for people who aren't in poverty. I just think that there is, we are not sensitive enough as the kids get older about this and it's a big concern.
Well, I think it's a big charge of the committee, I'm not about it and, you know, I know we do the Mitten Line.
We do actually do it, we just don't make a deal of it. So, for example, during the holiday season, our social worker works closely with every single trip that we go on. So, for example, that fundraising trip for the ski trip for the middle school, there are about 10 kids that we are paying for, even though it's a fundraising trip, just because we know the students and identified them. And every Christmas slash Hanukkah or holiday gift, there were, we did for all the children that were in Pearson Middle High School, they got their wish lists and exactly what they wanted on their wish list. So, we do it, but we just don't talk about it on purpose.
I have to be really thoughtful because the kids don't.
And every field trip that we go on, Washington DC to, if there was even a Hawaii issue, would figure it out.
That's really.
We just don't talk about it on purpose.
No, but that's good to hear because also, if we do talk about it in general sense, then those populations will know those resources exist, there may be people who aren't willing to share with us the situation they're in, but might come forward if they knew those resources were in place.
And even the kids that aren't identified as free and reduced, we just know through word of mouth, we'll reach out to the families.
That's great.
I really like the approach you guys are taking as to figuring out what the issues are before you jump in and do something. I think it's smart to figure out what course of action because sometimes we think we might have thoughts about what should be happening, but without actually hearing from.
And there's real experts out there, that's what you find out out here, is like, there's people that's somewhere.
That's why the idea of the partnerships is so important because they're out there doing things really well already, so we want to be able to model that.
Yeah, so we'll be hearing Kathy Creven from the Food Pantry are going to be weighing in with us and they've been miles ahead. Leah Oppenheimer from the CD has been doing tremendous work with legal groups as well, so I think that they can really be teaching us a lot, yeah. And they're really happy to have our partnership too, which is great, so.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, we'll switch gears. The next item on the agenda is middle school students prep for the IB program.
So I'm gonna ask the teachers to come up, because they're gonna be doing most of the presenting, but you all know who I am. So today we're presenting enhancing rigor in Pearson Middle School, that was what we heard from the board, as a charge that we need to do if we're not going, if we're gonna decide not going further with the middle years program. So right after that meeting, Mr. Nichols, myself and Mr. Guinan got together to talk about what we should do. Mr. Nichols suggested maybe let's do a think tank with the, some of our teacher leaders in our building. So we did that with Mr. Maloney, Mr. Malia and Ms. Westoff, as well as Ms. Napoli, who's not here, and we did a brainstorming and then we did a plan of action and put it together and here.
here it is. If you don't know them, Mr. Malia teaches seventh grade math and also IB computer science, but now switched gears and is in charge of implementing, we're doing an initiative for academic intervention services for math. So he's in charge of that right now. Mr. Maloney's our new technology teacher, the new Doug Allenway. And then, but also a master technology teacher, but totally different. And then Ms. Westhoff is our eighth grade math teacher, also algebra, and also teaches a section of ELA. She was a dual major in Binghamton, and rave reviews from all of the parents and students. So without further ado, I think Ms. Malia will first.
So I don't know if you remember, back at the November board meeting, Mrs. White Dunn and I spoke about the general feedback from the faculty about the middle years program. And we said that it seemed like the benefits of the middle years program seemed to far outweigh the added, sort of the cost of the middle years program, seemed to far outweigh the benefits that it provided. We suggested during that meeting that because the middle years program did not offer a formal curriculum, that it was mostly in name only that we'd be converting, and that that formality didn't seem to be worth the cost of the program itself. So we're here tonight to discuss some alternative enhancements that we can add to our middle years program, that will allow us to continue to challenge students, but also to help to prepare them for the diploma program that awaits them. Our team began by looking at some strengths and weaknesses of our current offerings. So if you look at the slide on the board, this is the experience that our sixth graders are exposed to. And you'll notice on each slide, the ones that are highlighted are things that are unique to that particular grade level. One thing that is important to keep in mind as we go through this, is that for each of the changes, a lot has changed in the middle years program since I've been teaching middle school in the last three years. For the sixth grade, you'll notice that the sixth graders have a full period of music every day. And along with that, they have a double period of math every day. And that allows them to cover some of the sixth grade math curriculum, and also some of the seventh grade math curriculum. The reason for that, the arrival of Common Core brought a number of challenges to our district and to districts around the state. The new exams are benchmarked in such a way that they tried to target so that a certain percentage of students would be able to achieve a certain SAT score. And with that SAT score, that was hopefully, in their case, predictive of how a student would do when they got to college. So they targeted that they wanted every third grader in New York State to have a seventy-five percent chance of passing their freshman English class. And that every third grader in New York State would have a sixty percent chance of passing their freshman year math class. So that's how the benchmarks were created. New York State created different benchmarks than other grades, than other states. So that made it particularly challenging in New York State, because our benchmarks are higher than some of the other states. So one of the reasons that we shifted to the model that we have now, where the sixth grade has a double period of math every day, is it allowed us to condense the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math curriculum down into more or less two years, where sixth grade, they cover sixth and some of seventh, and then in seventh grade, they cover seventh and some of eighth. And that's really allowed us to be in a better position to bring additional rigor down to the lower grades, and so that the transition to the algebra course, if they were to choose to take it in eighth grade, wouldn't be such a severe transition, that some of that would be brought down to sixth through seventh grade. And if you look at seventh grade, some changes here, the seventh grade students that I have in my seventh grade math class, we have a double period every other day. It allows us to get through seventh grade math, and then also some of the eighth grade curriculum. Any eighth grade curriculum that we don't cover, I offer through a grant program at John Jermaine Library, students can come and they can get support to finish the rest of that eighth grade curriculum with me during the summer. There was somebody that left behind a grant in their passing that supports that program. So that's there, there's, students have the additional opportunity to add French. There is health for the first time in seventh grade. There's music, every other. And you can see that there's a general music addition that's added there, and then home and careers in tech. And then a big transition for the seventh graders is they also, for the first time, have to deal with athletics and that time management skill. That's a very difficult transition for them. So Ms. Westhoff is going to come up and speak about some of the transitions that students go through in eighth grade.
So our big change in eighth grade is going to happen in the fact that students can now accelerate into high school level courses. So we lose that additional mandatory extra period of math every other day, and that gets refilled in with an art class that comes back. But again, students can either choose to go into algebra, which is at the high school level, or Math 8, which is the standard eighth grade math course. For science, they have the option to go into living environment, or they can stay in Science 8. For living environment, they get an extra period for labs. Whereas students that are in Math 8 and Science 8 have the option to take Math Lab, which really works as a nice support period. So the students that need that additional support have that built in often. With regards to how many students are accessing our accelerated courses, we have a fairly good percentage. Forty-seven percent were in algebra last year. We had sixty-eight percent of our eighth grade class last year in living environment. And being that that large percentage was accelerated, we had a great pass rate and our mastery rate, this is specifically for the eighth graders that took the assessment, was quite good. I mean, I'm very proud of them, they were my little babies. All right. Outside of the actual classroom, we offer a bunch of clubs and extracurriculars, whether a student wants to be involved in the musicals, which are incredible, or they're more interested in athletics, or perhaps they want to get involved in I-TRY, which is, really focuses on keeping the students well-rounded. We offer something more or less for everyone. Obviously, notice that little link of a coding over here? That's where Mr. Maloney's going to come in and talk to more of how we're building there. But I'm going to hand back over to Katie.
So one of the things that we looked at, the next steps, we met with some of the IB teachers, the IB diploma teachers, to get some of their feedback about what are the areas where there are opportunities for us to get the students more prepared for the IB diploma program. So in combination of meeting with them, along with going through some assessment data, we tried to look at different ways that we can identify some of our strengths and weaknesses, but also some of our opportunities and some threats to things that could hold us back. So just going through the assessment data really, really quickly, because I know a lot of you have seen this already. But you can see that we do have some strengths in the middle school curriculum. Our middle schoolers, if you take a look up there, I don't know how to get the laser pointer to work, but our middle schoolers tend to do pretty well in terms of ELA, and then if you go through and compare them to the surrounding school districts. And then in math, how we do compared to the state average. And then, again, compared to the surrounding school districts that were the red up there. So we do pretty well in our middle years. We're obviously continuing to try to improve and find ways to increase our scores, but we've made some significant changes over the last couple of years, and I think it's really paid off in terms of performance. We also looked at how students do in high school, and we've transitioned to see how many of them take advanced placement classes. And when you look at that, you know, the percentage of students that are scoring a three or higher on AP exams at Pearson is significantly above, not only the national average, the state average, and so on. So we're doing a good job there, but we're looking, continually looking for ways to improve. And obviously, that leads us to IB, and the idea that we're trying to get more and more kids to have access and to have success in their IB program. So these are some of the things that we looked at. And in doing so, we came up with four particular proposals that we think are going to help to enhance the rigor of the middle school, and to really get kids prepared for the IB diploma program. So the first one, Mr. Maloney's going to come up in a little while and speak to you about a renewed emphasis we're going to have on the STEAMs, so STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. So he'll be talking to you about some of the changes that you're going to see in the tech program that you've seen already, and then some of the changes that are to come. Also, a focus on experiences, one of the key areas of feedback that I received from the Theory of Knowledge teachers in the high school was that it wasn't so much about increasing the rigor to get them ready for Theory of Knowledge, but to increase the diversity of the experiences that students were exposed to, and the types of thinking that they were doing in middle school. So we'll talk about that. And then we have two other areas, an addition of a new course. So we spoke in our committee, and one of the things that we came up with was that students really weren't ready for Theory of Knowledge. One of the reasons was because they didn't have strong research skills. So a course that could help them with some of the research skills and some of the underlying skills that can help them be ready for the diploma program and their knowledge, and then finally, a capstone project that Ms. Westhoff will speak to you about. Mr. Maloney's going to come up first and talk about tech.
Hi, I'm Ed Maloney. I teach technology education. I teach two seventh grade classes, two eighth grade classes, and one high school class. We meet every day for the two quarters. It's still part of their state mandate, career and technical education. A little bit about myself, I'm a career changer. My previous job is a project manager at Intel chip company. I made a career change about ten years ago, became a technology education teacher. And I got into the New York State Master Teacher Program, primarily focuses on STEM. They still haven't adopted STEAM yet, they get it. But there's a lot of benefits to the Master Teacher Program. I get to network with other master teachers throughout Long Island and all of New York, learn about the curriculum they're doing, the projects they're doing, how they're engaging with the students. It's a lot of networking, you'll see a little bit of that shortly. I have multiple certifications, teaching certifications. Two summers ago, I went to Carnegie Mellon, became a certified robotics instructor. What's unique about Carnegie Mellon, it's right in Pittsburgh. And Pittsburgh is now becoming the robotics and artificial intelligence capital of the world. When I was down there, they had the self-driving cars, they had robots all over the place. And that all ties back to coding and programming. And when you hear the term STEM, you always hear, there's a big demand for STEM qualified personnel out there. The largest demand is in computer programming, something like fifty-two percent. And those are also the highest-paying jobs out there. Yet, when you look at the surveys, United States, only ten percent of schools offer computer science. And in Long Island, it's only seven percent. So one of the things is, how do you get these students engaged in computer programming? And we're doing that through robotics. I've gone to multiple workshops at Brookhaven National Labs on, it's called scientific computing, the opposite of computer science, just enough computer programming to do your job, whether you're a biologist or something like that. And I'm also Project Leadaway certified. Project Leadaway is the leading STEM curriculum in the country. And I have more Project Leadaway certifications than anybody else in Long Island. So when I was growing up, it was called SHOP, and it became industrial arts, and became technology education, then you had MST, math, science, technology, then you had STEM, and you had STEAM. And it just goes to show you how things are changing so rapidly. And it used to be, what do you want to do when you grow up? Well, now, it's what problems do you want to solve? Sixty percent of the jobs these students have, will have in the future, don't even exist yet right now. So what we say is, we're preparing the students for the future, for jobs that don't even exist yet. And we do that through the four Cs, which is creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. And we talk to them how it's a global world, it's a global economy, and you're not just competing with people down the street, you're competing with everybody around the world to get a job. And we tie that all back to careers when we're working on our projects. So these are some of the projects. Ms. Carr, I said, keep it to a few slides, I had to jam a lot in there. Normally, I'd have a bunch of slides and go through them quickly. But it all starts with technical drawing. Students all need to know how to draw. Drawing is a form of communication. And then we migrate over into introduction to computer aided drawing, otherwise known as CAD. CAD will help them draw quicker, better, more accurately, easier to make changes, but it won't draw for them. So that's why we still have to go back to the basics of drawing. From that, we could also go into design. We do a structures project, that Mr. Nichols saw some of it, where the students design a bridge on a computer. Brookhaven National Labs has a national bridge building competition right here on Long Island. And they design it on the computer, rather than designing it by hand and building it and testing it over and over again. By designing it on the computer, then they can run a simulation and see if their bridge works effectively or not. They're looking for the most efficient bridge. And then they keep going in back and modifying and modifying, and eventually, they get a design that they like. And then we actually build a test-in class, we have a little competition. Going the other way, when we go into CAD, we can go down into these realms here too, we'll get back to that in a second. With robotics, going back to the STEM, the Master Teacher Program, I was at Syossett High School a few weekends ago, and a gentleman there, one of the other master teachers, had about a hundred and fifty little robots. And I said, "What do you do with all the robots?" And he goes, "Oh, I use them for a summer program." He goes, "You can borrow them and bring them back to your school." So I had these little robots working closely with Mr. Fisher and his team. We got them all set up, so all the students are doing introduction to programming. We have these little robots here. They look like this, but Syossett lent them to me until the summertime, so they're learning how to program. And again, that's how you get them interested in programming and doing coding. Little devices like this, they're learning on that. And then we're also offering middle school club, where we have virtual programming and physical programming. These are little higher-level robots. In the virtual world, the students learn how to program on their computer. They don't need a robot, they can do it anywhere, anytime. And they practice, and there's all sorts of statistics showing they learn how to code faster, quicker. They're not embarrassed, because if they try it in front of their friends and it doesn't work, you know, they feel foolish, but they can do it on the computer and test it all out ahead of time. And once they get it working on the computer, then they can go over to the physical world, where they actually build a robot, they design a robot, and then they know already how to program it. But now, they have to understand the differences between the virtual world, which is the ideal world, and the physical world, where the physical world, maybe there's dust on the floor, the wheels are slipping, the batteries are dying. And that's why they have to learn all about sensors, and that goes back to artificial intelligence. It's all about robots and sensors. So it all keeps tying back together. And when I talked to my students about robotics, when I was driving here the other day, they said anywhere between ten to twenty percent of all jobs are going to be replaced by robots in the near future. And I said, "You don't want to be the person being replaced by a robot, you want to be the person designing, building, testing, repairing, modifying the robot. You want to be on the other spectrum of it." So we're doing a lot with robotics to get them into coding. Going back to the design work, we just got this the other day, this is a, it's called a vinyl cutter. And again, the students will draw on the computer in two dimensions, and they'll make posters and stickers and decals, and they'll start understanding the concept of design work. And then from there, we're going to move over to three-dimensional, where we use things like a 3D printer. Talking with Mr. Fisher, we're in the process of investigating 3D printers. A 3D printer starts from nothing, and it's called PANDA, and it builds up whatever they designed on the computer, we're able to print it out. The opposite is a CNC machine, subtractive, where you put a block in there, whether it's wood or metal, and it cuts away. And again, it's what you designed on the computer, so it all goes back to the computer design. And I just heard from Toshiba, it was on Wednesday, that we probably got the eighteen-thousand-dollar grant for the CNC machine. We're going to order that, so I'm looking forward to that.
I like that.
Yeah, it's going to be a totally different way for students to build projects. So we're, Mr. Fisher again, on setting up a computer lab. And then we also do manufacturing projects. A lot of students from UC run out of tools, they make their own pens for the holidays, they made them for some of the administration staff. So again, that's just another type of design project. Technology education's all about problem solving. So they hit a problem, there's a problem statement, they do some research on it, they come up with some type of design, and then they actually build the design, they test the design, and then they provide feedback. So going back to capstone projects, if there's something that they want to build, we will have the technology in the near future. So. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because I think this curriculum is, you know, with the STEM STEAM person, I think this is amazing, absolutely amazing. Have we thought about having someone who uses an elective, so that any high schooler could access some of this curriculum? Because I think this could really ignite some interest for students that have no exposure to any of us.
I have high schools.
It's an option, but I just, you know, for those that are already in high school.
We have one section, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't say we have no exposure, we do have two computer courses that we introduce.
Right, but that's very different. Those courses is not this experience at all. That's a very kind of academic, you know, textbook experience. This is kind of hands-on manufacturing, where you see the output of your effort. And, you know, this is a very, I think that this gets kids excited.
The students are very excited about this. The students are very excited about this. They keep asking me, well, when are we getting this, when are we getting that? And what we're working on.
The students have made wooden pens, they've made these other, they've made some really great things. I know we have a high school class, and we're, Ed's doing a great job, is what he's doing after-school with the students. Right now, his schedule is full. And I have a feeling we're going to have a huge demand when we see these middle schoolers come out and they have to leave him behind, because some of these seventh graders haunt his classroom. His classroom is never empty. You go to home there any period of the day, and they're like trying to finish up something. So, we're really happy to have him on board, because he has some real, you know, you have gym rats. Well, we now have tech rats. You have kids that never want to leave his classroom, so that's awesome.
Something like the, in the bottom left, the CNC that we're getting the grant for, that is going to be used, it can be used across the board with the high school students, with the existing high school class too as well, because I've exposed them to CAD, and they understand how they're going to be designing projects. It's just a matter of actually getting it implemented, so.
So, for clarity, this that you're talking about is not a course for students? What is it then?
This year?
Yeah.
Oh, no, this is all the projects we currently do.
For the middle school course, for seventh graders or eighth graders?
Both.
Right.
Oh, okay. Her question made me think that this was something for after-school.
No, I was only about, elective for high school, I was, can high school kids access this curriculum? Because most of our high schoolers have not been exposed to this stuff before, so that's why I was asking.
Got it, thank you.
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood that it could be an elective. I personally know that it can be an elective.
But the breadth of that course is not, it's not equal to the breadth of the course in middle school. And also, the population that historically has selected that course as a, to take, doesn't necessarily have interests that are congruent with this. So, traditionally, Math Science and Technology is a course that allows kids to meet a science or math requirement for graduation, because they couldn't meet it in the traditional curriculum, so.
But the curriculum is very different than what we're offering now, though.
Yeah, but these are students generally who have failed other courses.
Right.
And so, you have to, yeah.
I have a question. Can you tell me why there's a coding club and a Girls Who Code club?
I can answer that. We're piloting, we have a regular coding club, but we are piloting a Girls Who Code. That's a national program, and we had one of our teachers who's been doing, she's a social studies teacher, but she's, she has quite an affinity for coding, and she asked if she could pilot that. And research has shown us that if there's a room full of young men that are coding, girls will take a backseat, and they'll move further and further back. They won't take risks and they won't step up.
Shit, they should have watched the Golden Globes last night.
She asked if she could pilot it, so we have a way that we have for a small amount. We can pilot it for just a 10-week period, right, Mr. Nichols?
So, can they join the regular coding club?
Oh, sure, and boys can join Girls Who Code. So, they can join, they can join the regular. And so, she had a lot of interest in it, and we actually had 20, I think it's 21, girls that have joined.
That's great.
That are really involved. And they actually have competitions. And it was just originally by the, it started by a day of code to just try and get every population. They actually have block code, they have, you know, they have every population that they're trying to draw in to get folks to just give it a shot, to just give it a try.
Did you think it was a bad thing?
Okay. And that's pretty traditional when it comes to any STEM-related job.
I think I'm looking at it from a younger age group. Because the girls I know in third and fourth grade, they just code. It's not an intimidation thing, it's not a boy thing, it's just.
Because they've been exposed to it right along, and I, for high school, it's still new, it's still new to them. It's still, it's still, they haven't really been exposed to it. So, these are high school girls that are, that really are seeing it for the first time, yeah.
I've gone to like the Long Island Technology Summit, where people have presented there. And they're saying that in the years to come, with cellphones the way they are, everybody's going to be doing some type of coding.
Yeah, that's why it just seems, shoot, I better take this class.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next thing I want to move on to is the course that we were talking about adding to middle school. So, some of the things, some of the ideas that are incorporated in the structure of the course. I look at data all the time, background is in economics. And one of the studies that just came out was from Google. They looked at their highest-performing teams as part of their innovation that they do at Google. And they found through two research projects, Project Oxygen and Project Aristotle, that the highest-performing teams at Google weren't necessarily the teams with the members who had the most accomplishments from a tech perspective, but rather those that had the highest rating for soft skills, people skills, collaboration, and things like that. So, one of the areas of feedback that I received from the IB teachers that I talked to was that some of, those are some of the areas that are causing our students to struggle with IB. They're not used to having to work collaboratively and to work in groups. So, that's one of the areas that we're going to try to focus on with this middle school course. The data up on the board is from the World Economics Forum. It talks about, and you probably have seen this before, the prediction. A lot of the times, they release this, and then the prediction is about four years later. So, this was released in 2016, predicting what skills would be most in demand in the economy in 2020. And you see that, you know, soft skill, there's a lot of soft skill stuff up here. So, collaborating with others, creativity, it's not just STEM now. They're starting to realize one of the areas that we're going to be able to compete competitively in an environment where automation is increasingly replacing jobs, is in that creativity area. So, that was one of the areas that was spoken to also by some of the diploma program teachers, is the areas we need to focus on in middle school. So, all of that leads us to a new course that we're going to try to be introducing, a proposal for a new course. We're calling it PLANT, but that's just tentative. The idea being that we are going to try to get the kids ready for theory of knowledge and get them ready for their diploma program. So, one of the areas that has been spoken about is their ability to assess the credibility of information. If you look on the news now, everyone's arguing about what's fake news and back and forth. Our students don't really have those skills to be able to go on Google, do a simple search on a search engine, and figure out what's credible. And that's some of the skills that if they develop those skills earlier, then we can have more substantive discussions during class. So, that's something we'd like to introduce in the middle school. Supporting the transition to theory of knowledge, so again, speaking with the theory of knowledge teachers, how can we help to get students more ready for that course? Engaging students in quantitative reasoning, how to interpret charts, graphs, look at data. Some of the time, the students don't really learn those skills until seventh or eighth grade in their math curriculum. Yet, the earlier we can get them more prepared to look at those types of, the more substantive conversations we can have with the students. Empowering them to take ownership of their own learning. We obviously want students to be self-directed learners. We want them to be able to be lifelong learners and to be able to invest in their own education. Ideally, the teacher would be the guide, and the students would have the motivation to learn on their own. And we find that a lot of times, our students don't have those skills. So, maybe there's a way that through a course, we can have to develop that at a younger age. And then finally, again, the research skills, that the kids don't really know where to go to find information. So, the earlier we can introduce those skills, the better. Our hope is that a course like this can be taught partially in sixth grade, and then culminating, kind of collaboratively in seventh grade, and then culminating in eighth grade with a capstone project. And so, Ms. Westoff's going to come up and speak to you about that capstone project. Before I say that, obviously, we can still tie in, even though we're not formally going to be an IB middle-years program if we don't make that decision, we can still tie in a lot of the learner profile into what we do and start to introduce the students to the learner profile in that course. Here's Ms. Westoff.
Great. So, when I was tasked with coming up with a capstone project for the eighth graders, first Titanic, but then I thought back on, well, what were the most interesting and memorable educational experiences that I've had? And I always come back to a philanthropy course that I took in college, where there were about 15 of us in the room. I mean, it was magical. We had a grant for $10,000 and a full semester to decide how we would divide those funds. Local charities actually submitted grant proposals. So, you know, 10 weeks in, we're fighting like cats and dogs over whether we're going to give money to a telescope or to build a baseball field. And that stuck with me so much that I'm still angry about the telescope, you know, like it sticks. So, I was, I figured out a way to take that, but that was obviously on a big scale. We were sponsored by the Learning by Giving Foundation, and scale that down for our eighth graders. So, the working theory right now is maybe groups of 10 with a faculty advisor, so they can work together. And essentially, if I could get applications from the community, obviously, we have people from the community coming in to present about their organizations. I'm sure CME would love to come in and get some extra funds. So, if these kids were given actual money, that could be from their fundraising that they've done as a class up to this point. It could be from additional fundraising that they could do throughout the year. That makes it real. So, they sit there, they have information now. They have to comb through that data and decide, what is a worthwhile cost for me to give to, and where can my money make the greatest impact? Ultimately, this would culminate in a research paper, building off of those skills that they would learn in the PLANT course. I'm doing this on a small scale with my seventh-grade ELA class right now. And we're focusing it on India, but what they're coming up with when they're identifying issues, they're so passionate about it, they're coming up with fundraising ideas. It's great to see the spark that ignites in them when they realize that other people need their help. So, with regards to a capstone project, I figured what better to do than teach them that other people around need their help, and they can provide that in an intelligent way, instead of just throwing money at a problem.
I don't know if we introduced that you were both MAP and ELA.
Yeah. She's a real wild card, that's why I'm outside the box. I love that philanthropy course, so I wonder why that popped up in ELA, too.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I love the idea of this class. Are you referencing it for the entire school population or for a small population that seems to be prepared for something like this?
This would be the entire eighth grade. So, this would be building on the experience that they had in the PLANT course throughout sixth and seventh. And I believe we had a way to work this into the schedule. So, it would be, what'd you say, one day?
Well, so, this would be our proposal. They meet every day for, in sixth grade, for music. It would be an every-other-day course, just like the TOK course in the IB program. And then using our academic support period with contractual alterations in order to do it. So, that academic support period, once a week, could be for that capstone project, working with those 10 kids and that one teacher mentor.
And just, that is consistent with the IB MYP program, is that it would be for all students, which is, had we gone with that, would have been the same situation there.
So, on the view, you said it's a 1 to 10 ratio, but everybody in the grade would take it?
Yes.
So, what is it, like, because if there's 80 kids in the grade, that means eight different sections?
Just like our academic support period. There's eight different sections.
But you have, you might have 10 different teachers who are mentors for this.
Mentors for that during the academic support period, and then a class to support it during the day.
And so, if the teacher teaches other things, then what would, who would be supporting, providing the support during academic support?
The academic support, so remember, at the end of the day, our middle schoolers, just like our high schoolers, have an academic support period. That academic support teacher would be the mentor for that group of students. And then there will be a teacher that would teach the PLANT course. And then also, we were hoping to do every-other-day in home ec and tech, because we're over-serviced in that. Not home ec and tech, technology, we're not, home and careers, we are. And then that would be where we would meet that. So, it's every-other-day during that semester-long course.
So, in terms of the administrative piece and the demands it places on us to change things, it sounds cumbersome, but when compared to the MYP changes we would have had to make, it's much more reasonable, and we can design how it fits within what we currently do.
Can I ask a question? I just, a couple clarifying questions. So, the PLANT piece, that's the previous slide? That's like a, that's the?
That's like a pre-introduction, a Pierce to middle school sixth-grade course that we meet every-other-day. Just like the TOK for the IB diploma kids, they take it every-other-day for the entire year.
And then, do you feel like this also addresses some of the executive function skills?
Absolutely. So, like, those are things like how to be a learner, what does learning mean, empowering and being motivated. That is such a middle school thing that we know our middle schoolers are doing, and we're trying to do a piecemeal of it, but here, it's an actual formative setting for them.
So, are you thinking of this for this fall?
I would love that, if you approved it. Our teachers would kill me, but yeah.
Is it, are you thinking of doing like all at once, or would it roll out?
We're going to roll out, I would assume. We might do a mini capstone in eighth grade, just to see how it works because of the structure. Our sixth and seventh graders right now are used to structured academic support periods. Our eighth graders would not be, so our seventh grade would be able to handle that transition more smoothly. So, at least the capstone project would happen, and then the PLANT would start with the sixth grade, and then we would build up from there.
And they would stick with PLANT in seventh grade as well?
Yes, in some way or form, but it would be more of a overcompensating. We're still trying to figure out where we'd be able to fit it into the schedule.
Seventh grade's a little more restrictive.
Because of the health component.
Because of some health.
However, we could.
Same as could be threaded into that.
Yeah, we also can thread, there's a way to overarching thinking. I was talking about it with Ms. Graves at lunch, because I was excited about, like, this is great work that our teachers have done, possibly in the home and career section of how we can weave it in, because they have to do career planning and management. So, that is a way to say, hey, maybe we're doing this.
I mean, does it make sense to kind of, you know, roll it out on a smaller level with, you know, kids that you think would be more successful, or just to just go all in?
My argument to that is, I would want all the kids to go into that, just like Chase put the Google slide up on the presentation, where it's saying we have to work collaboratively. Part of working is to have to work with different people in different emotional and social intelligences. And they might have a high academic intelligence, but they're not able to collaborate. We want our kids to learn how to collaborate.
No, 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 I understand it's going to be for all the students, but I mean, when you start the rollout.
No, yeah, I think we would be, I want it to be for every kid. So, like, the sixth grade would be for every kid, and then in eighth grade, yes, we might be a little, for the capstone, just because we're starting it. It might be through a class to do it at first, just so that we can figure out, and that can work out the hiccups that we might have along the way. So, when that first sixth-grade class comes, that capstone project can be completed without that many minor defects.
Go ahead. One other quick question. Did you want to go ahead or sorry? I just had another quick question. Okay, so, on this plant, and this all sounds amazing, but the PLANT piece, it sounds like those are the learning goals. So, how do you determine the content?
So, I taught AP Stat in the past, and a lot of the AP Stat curriculum would really fit in well. And if you were to tie it down and present it in a similar way that I presented the AP Stat class, it could accomplish a lot of these objectives. So, it would take some curriculum writing time, but I think we could put something together that could address all of this.
But I mean, do you feel like with this frame, you can thread through, you know, I don't know, in terms of what are some other goals, in terms of, like, I'm just thinking of, you know, we all talked about sort of increasing the vigor. I wonder, too, if vigor is not the rigor. The rigor, I'm sorry, the rigor was not the only word that we meant, but like, I just, for example, I just remember thinking back to, I remember when my kids went through the third grade at the elementary school, and how excited they got, because rather than learning about history, they were learning about Kenya and Japan and the global, the third countries, right, the global piece. And so, I'm just thinking about how, in other words, it was that content that got them excited. So, is there an opportunity to sort of string, sort of, I mean, I know you guys are so tied there by.
No, I know, I think we're tied, but at the same time, I think we're trying to use this course to bleed in, lack of a better word, that sounds terrible, but to bleed into the other areas and disciplines.
I mean, it's hard not to think globally in this day and age, as compared to when your kids were in third grade. You know, things have changed a lot, like, the world has gotten a lot smaller.
That was, that was kind of, if I could get you to expand on that a little bit, because I love how you had vertical conversations to address what the needs were, is to, okay, what is it exactly that we need to be doing at the middle school to help prepare our kids? And it sounds like you've got some great direction from those IB teachers. I guess my next question is, okay, so if these sorts of things are being taught in isolation in one course, are there going to be horizontal conversations, so that everybody's kind of on the same page with respect to, okay, now we're in all our other subject areas, and this is kind of how we're thinking about learning, and this is how we're thinking about communicating and collaborating?
I think our middle school, and our middle school teachers can talk to us, we meet all the time, and we talk to each other horizontally all the time, and even just six through eight all the time, just to make sure that our middle school feels like a middle school, and also, we're talking about different curriculum. So, I don't think that will be a problem, because we have monthly grade-team meetings, but also, our teachers are always meeting all the time as it is. Like, each grade team is almost like a little clique, which you don't want to say as a middle school, because that's a bad word, but they're always talking. Yeah, team would be better. Click came into play because of the reach, sorry.
This sounds incredible, and so, I'm really encouraged about all the, I think there's a lot of innovation happening through technology and non-technology, what we're looking at. One of the things that I know the IB diploma program demands is to be a good writer. And that has, you know, over the course of my tenure in the district, that has been a little bit of a challenge of having students really prepared to write going into that program. They leave generally being really good writers and prepared for college. But I'm just wondering, from a middle school perspective, is there anything additional we're doing? Maybe it's woven in through these programs to address improving writing skills, to be even more successful going into that IB program versus kind of it being a little bit of a shock.
Yeah, I would say, just in addition to, you know, we're focusing on grades six, seven, and eight, but the charge, or at least what I heard last time, was, what are you going to do, six through 10?
Right.
So, Mr. Guyan has been talking about putting in a course, whether it's ninth and 10th or just 10th, that sort of addresses some of what you just talked about, in terms of research skills and writing skills. And we have the time and the schedule to do that, but I don't want to cut you off.
No, it's all right, and then also, in the capstone project, Laura touched upon it, they have to do a research paper at the end, and then defend that research paper, just kind of almost like an assessment in IB that we're trying to mirror it after.
So, they'll get some instruction and skill development to prepare them to be able to do that?
But if they're doing that, then in the eighth-grade team, the seventh-grade team, and the sixth-grade team, we're talking about how do we build up to that? So, it's not just like, here's, you have to write a paper and defend. How do you do that?
And Kira McLaughlin's incredible. I'm doing with my seventh graders right now. She walked them through how to use noodle tools, we walked through citations and everything. So, when you give them. So when you give them the sources, when you give them the resources out there, they can understand how to combine them and apply them. I'm reading some of their papers and I'm blown away, so.
That's great.
Question. I think these are some great ideas and it's a great presentation that you guys put together. I just had questions on the, just kind of bigger picture, because I think we talked about this in November as, you know, the, I think there was a lot of thought, the community, a lot of folks were excited about the IB middle years program. And I think the teachers made some really compelling points at that meeting about why that may not be the best thing for us to do. But we talked about what other, other bigger picture things we could do, and I think there's some good points in here. But I wonder what other things we might look at as well. Is there a way to flip back to that slide that says proposals to increase?
Yes.
So these look like a good start to me, but I, I think, like, I think Chris made a good point about something for writing. And I wonder if you've looked at anything like honors classes for students who are interested? Maybe an open enrollment honors classes or a gifted program? Is that something that has been considered?
I could speak to you.
You wanna speak to that?
Yeah. So we do have honors in, in tenth grade. That's really the, the first time in humanities that it's offered, in AP world, in social studies. And then in science and math, the first time it's offered, for the most part, is in eighth grade. Although we do a little separation in seventh.
Oh, yeah.
It's always in eighth in math and science. And then you also have special ed. But what's happening in most schools out here at this point is the exact opposite of what you're talking about. They're actually moving away from grouping at earlier ages. I was just on the phone today with the principal at another school who is doing away with all honors courses because of the impact it's having on the overall school culture. And that's a long philosophical discussion, but I think I've said this before, that philosophically where I'm at is when you start to, at a very young age, separate kids out into different groups, I think to a large extent, you define the ceiling for them and their own sense of self-worth moving forward. And I'm very, very troubled, or very reluctant to accelerate kids and put them in gifted sections at young ages, like sixth grade, because when you have them from six to twelve, grade, grades that is, you see that it kicks in for them at different, at different ages. And there is a downside to saying, you know what, we're gonna track kids beginning in, in sixth grade. And that's an argument that, and a discussion that I've had for years with our fa- with my faculty. And not always seeing eye to eye, especially in the area, in certain areas, like mathematics, for instance. There's a constant debate back and forth, hey, we could do a lot better. And I don't wanna speak for Chase or Laura, because I haven't had these discussions with you two. With other people, we could do a lot better if we had, you know, really the high achieving kids in one section. Eighteen kids or whatever, who really are gifted. And I'm like, yeah, maybe you could, but I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's best for the entire population. And is it all about the academic achievement, or are there other skills that the kids could be learning in those sections about helping their, their friends and collaborating and working with people of different abilities? What are the values that you attach to that? So anyway.
And then to piggyback off that, kids know if they're being tracked or not when they're in there. And the students that are not in the tracked classes, there's a lower self-esteem and a lower self-worth, and we're worried about that, especially at the middle level. And then also, I believe I said this before during the other previous meeting, I worked at the New York City Lab School, which is one of the top middle schools in New York City, and it's a test-in school. However, being a test-in school, our special head and ENL population aren't test-in. We let our community students in. And having those students in those accelerate, and we didn't accelerate in that school. Only in the eighth, in algebra, and we did the same in type thing, and we were, we worked around it. And everybody took, actually, Earth Science in eighth grade, and we had a huge pass rate. And it was a huge culture building, because one of the biggest things and tenants of that school was inclusion. And like, we try to bring that here, because if kids feel included, then they feel self-worth and then they feel smart and they know they can do it. Far from just doing stuff is being, being understanding of that.
Yeah, but my, my question, and I understand your opinion on that. I think you talked about that last time, and I respect it, not necessarily disagreeing with it. But I, my question was more, is this something that we're considering? And it seems like it might be a discussion worth having, because there are different ways to do that. And I think one way to do grouping is where you, you pick out certain kids and say they ought to be in class. But there's other ways to do it, where there's, there's open enrollment for certain classes where anyone can sign up for it. And so my question was just, is this something that's been considered? And I would think it's worth at least having a discussion about this and what some of the di- different op- options are for a more robust program. And I, I think this is a great start, but if we're gonna say we're not gonna go forward with the IB middle years program, and it looks like that's where everyone's headed, I think we ought to think about some more robust things that we could be doing in these years. We are losing a lot of students. There are a lot of kids who are leaving the, the district here. And there are, there's a sense in the community that there is not enough academic rigor. And I'm not saying we're not doing good things, like, like, we can see from this presentation that we are. But I think to the extent that we're gonna talk about more things that we ought to be doing, why not have a more robust discussion and, and maybe that's not going to be the answer, but why not at least consider these things?
Well, yeah, and I think we're certainly open to having those discussions moving forward. And like I said, we, I've had those discussions at least here for, you know, ten or twenty years. Couple of points. Number one, I think that you can have open enrollment. Like, for instance, the school I referenced before, my name, I didn't mention my name, is Southampton. And what they're really going to do, they have an open enrollment policy, but they accelerate kids beginning in eighth grade. And what they're moving to do right now is to do away with acceleration altogether. And not have, because what's happened in the past is that kids self-select, and that's largely a function of the educational attainment level of their parents. And what's happening is that they're having three sections accelerate and one section not accelerate, which is becoming a dumping ground. And they're seeing that the equity in education that public schools should stand for is not there. So you always have to balance that, because the reality is that, that is what will play out if we in fact accelerate at younger ages. Not only will you have, will you have kids developing a sense of what their ceiling is at a younger age, which I think has a negative impact, but you're also gonna have the, the sectioning or the tracking of the students be not only dependent on their educational level, but the educational level and the involvement of their parents, which to me runs counter to what public education should be. I'm all about having that discussion moving forward, but I want you to be clear that it's something that I've considered, Mr. Guinan's considered, and in his history, not only working here but elsewhere, and Ms. Carrier, and many of the teachers. The second thought that I wanna make clear, and I don't, I don't usually do this, but I wanna make clear to the board that, that I'm aware of it, and I want you to understand it, is that Pearson right now, I keep hearing rigor. We are the number one achieving high school out here by far. And when I say out here, if you go from, let's say, Centaunemore Ridge is out, okay? There are eleven districts that I can count. So it's Centaunemore Ridge, Eastport, South Manor, Hampton Bays, Southampton, East Hampton, West Hampton Beach, Montauk, South Old, Greenport, Sag Harbor, I think I'm at ten or eleven. Anyway, what we do every year, I, I present the data to you guys on how we do on regions assessments. But I do it in a way that doesn't really reference other districts. And I haven't done that in about fifteen years, because I know where we stand. But just because I don't present it to you, that, that comparative data doesn't mean I'm not aware of it. So, just the, a little reference check for you. If you look at the regions assessments, which are really the only apple-to-apple comparison that you guys can, that we can look at, because we offer IB and East Hampton doesn't, and some schools offer AP and this and that. There are ten regions assessments that we administer. We administer one in English in eleventh grade. We administer global and US and social studies and mathematics, integrated algebra, geometry, algebra two, and science, living environment, earth science, chemistry, and physics. Ten assessments total. If you go to the New York State Report Card, and this data is available to everybody, you can access the passing rate and mastery rate. The passing rate is the percentage of students who score sixty-five or higher. Mastery rate's the percentage of students who score eighty-five or higher. I've been doing this for fifteen years now, looking at the data. But if you look at thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen, and you take the, the passing rate for each individual test and the mastery rate, you add them together. So let's say you had a ninety percent passing rate and a fifty percent mastery rate. Hundred and forty divided by two, I would, I would label that, that number for that course seventy. And you rank us by regions exam against the eleven, the ten other schools that I referenced. We are number one in thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and it's not even close. Of those ten disciplines, or the ten exams that are administered, we're number one in six of them. And the other ones were number two or three. So I hear rigor, and I'm all about rigor, and when I think about rigor, I, I hear enrichment. But I wanna make sure that the board understands that the, the current achievement level now is very, very high.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And I don't, I mean, no one, we're all proud of what is accomplished here in this district.
And I'm not being defensive.
No, 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 I understand.
No, and you know what? Did you get all that? You're taking that, that deserves a big round of applause. All right, go ahead now, Alex.
Yeah, no, no, I think that's great, and I think that we're all proud of what's going on here in the district. And I, but I think, you know, this discussion, I think everyone's on the same page here. We're trying to do what's best for our kids and have the greatest opportunities for our kids. And, and just because we're doing great is not a reason for us to continue to try to strive to do better. But I think, and, and I respect your opinion on all those issues, and I don't necessarily disagree with any of them. But I think, you know, just because you don't like the idea of an honors program or things about it shouldn't mean that we're not gonna have a discussion about that, that that should just be part of the discussion.
Yeah.
And I think that we should be looking at some bigger things when we talk about what to do instead of the middle years program. I don't think we should just be taking certain things off the table. It should be a robust discussion. If there are things about, you know, an honors program or a gifted program that we think are downside or not good for the district, that should be part of the conversation, rather than just not discussing it at all.
I agree, but I also wanna make sure everyone's clear that the middle years program was for every child and there was no differentiation between honors and not honors. It was for every student. So that portion of middle years does not coincide. The honors and middle years isn't.
Yeah, and I also think it's the community school.
Yeah.
It's not Jeff Mickel's school. I'm just one person having to be the principal, but I'm still one voice. So that's really what the community wants.
An important voice, yeah.
The, the, the idea about some families choosing to send their children to private school when they get to a certain grade, I've seen a huge shift, but I think that's more about our demographic.
Yeah, I agree.
Because our, our achievement continues to get even better, the programs are even richer. We have, you know, the IB program for our high school, you know, we're one of only a handful, and it's a phenomenal program. But, you know, my oldest was going into high school nine years ago. Very few families could afford to send their kids to private school then. And very few of the parents of that class ever went to private school. Then with my, my daughter who's now nineteen, there were more kids. Now with my daughter who's in tenth grade, many more of those parents have the money and went to private school themselves. I think that's the biggest shift and driver and predictor. And when I talk to those parents and ask, say, yeah, I went to private school, that's what the experience I want for them, I, I don't think it's a huge reflection on, should we be a better, could we be a better public school or not than the demographic? So I, I, I think that's been the biggest driver for them.
I think that's absolutely, absolutely true, actually, at what she's saying. I agree, agree completely. But in addition, because I know a number of the families who have older kids, there can be other reasons that have nothing to do with the school. For example, kids who are advanced in a certain sport that just isn't a focus here.
Sure.
And so if they're gonna go to a certain level, they need to go elsewhere. The fact that we are a small school, and so that limits us in certain ways, and so, so I think there are other.
No, I understand. That doesn't necessarily dictate what we do or not do. I think everyone, I'm sorry.
I think a lot of people want a jump in.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Jeff, I agree with you, you know, everything you said. I, I do, I think it's great we're number one out of eleven. I do, however, question the comparability and the demographics of the surrounding area, whereas I feel like maybe we should be comparing ourselves to other places. But I wanna bring the conversation back to the middle school regimen. And I love this program. I, I, I think it's great. And I really, I do agree with the, you know, no child left behind and protecting the sensitive and most fragile. But I also feel like we're also forgetting about the other level on the other side. I mean, it's my understanding with the, you know, the, the, the Every Child Succeeds Act, the feds have come down on New York State and they're like, you need us to give more of a plan to deal with the gifted kids. I do feel like there is a trend that may be shifting, I guess we'd say backwards a little bit, to not segregating, but focusing on every student as opposed to just focusing on the sensitive and fragile learners and not wanting them to feel left out. I, I, like I said, I do think there is a shift coming down the pipeline, and I don't know where that throws us into the mix. I, I love this program. I, I would love to see it for everybody. The, I, I'm not too sure about just doing the, the rigor where you just accelerate. So we have acceleration for seventh and eighth grade math and science.
Just eighth grade. Where everyone's accelerated in math and science.
Yeah, what we've done is we've condensed, and this is what Southampton's talking about doing now, what we did four years ago. We took two years of instruction in mathematics, or three years, and condensed it into two. So the way, the way to think about it, what we did three or four years ago, is there's a hundred and eighty periods of instruction a year. Typically, to cover sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math, you would have five hundred and forty periods of instruction over three years. Well, now in sixth grade, when we doubled instruction, that goes to three hundred and sixty. And then increasing it by fifty percent in seventh grade makes it two seventy, two seventy plus three sixty, each equals six hundred and thirty periods of instruction. So the way it works at Pearson is, in sixth and seventh grade, students have six hundred and thirty periods of instruction to cover sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. If they had just gone to a normal school, they would have five hundred and forty periods of instruction over three years to cover. So that's the, that's the organizational shift. And what you've seen, and the reason we made that shift, and then I'll be quiet, because I'm not really answering your question. But the reason that we made that shift is because we saw our mathematics numbers in that analysis that I do, you were, in that discipline, we weren't as strong as I thought we would be or should be, given our demographics and some other factors. Well, since that shift and the, and the move to Common Core, we're actually number one in integrated algebra the last two years and number two.
You mean Common Core algebra?
Yes, that's what I meant. Common Core algebra and number two in Common Core geometry. So those shifts, those kind of organizational shifts that you make can, can work. It takes a couple of years to grow.
And I also think with the rigor portion of it, any parent that has a meeting with myself or Mr. Mathley about it, we've worked with individual families on altering schedules to make sure those students that aren't feeling challenged feel challenged within the school day. We've done it on a case-by-case thing, and then also with students that said that they were bored. I have like five families that I could talk to that said they were bored, then they homeschooled or they left. And then the kid came back and said, wow, we were really actually challenged here. And we're really open to allowing kids to access higher level courses, even if they're in eighth grade or seventh grade.
Brittany, you have, you're more of a, you have a lot of experience day in and day out. The other thing that I always think about with middle-level education is the, the importance of not only emphasizing the academic and the enrichment, but also the whole child piece. Because they're still defining at that age, and it's hard to not see it, it's hard to see it the way we see it every day, where kids are still defining who they are day in and day out. And their friend one day is their enemy the next, and vice versa.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, and I'm actually, I don't really agree with accelerating. Let's just say my husband skipped like three grades in the eighties, and he's really weird.
I got away with this being videotaped occasionally. Like, you might wanna tell her that was off the record.
I guess my, like.
I'm gonna give their traits number to my husband, because I feel like I beat him up more than that.
So I guess when, if you have a sixth grader, then do you just put him in a math class with eighth graders?
We've done that. We haven't done that exactly, but we've done things where we've even given them, we have the math lab with Ms. Sedlinski, like, there's ways to do it so that they're accessing more and being challenged.
I had, I had the pleasure of working, you know, in my prior life with a gifted and talented group. And we had Saturday seminars and we had. And we had Saturday seminars, and we had, and one of the two very strong principles was, don't go faster, go deeper.
Right, exactly.
Because if you're doing geometry, have them, they're, you know, the children, the students may be learning geometry on this level, but that student, you want to make sure you're challenging them and going deeper. And, you know, and every child, you may have to build a unique model for every child. Very often, you can't present that model up there. And the second part is, and I've had students go to MIT, and I had a student that used to go around corners and turn it twice. And, and he had three watches that kept track of every, and he was beloved by his peers, God bless him. But he was, he's building robots in Japan now. And, and I remember when he went off to MIT, you know, we had all those conversations about whether to accelerate him. And at the end of the day, when he, you know, graduated and came back and was talking about his experiences in Japan, he said, I always come back because my friendships were the most important part of my schooling.
Absolutely, that's one of the reasons why I don't.
So, so that's why I mean, you always have to be, and I, that's, so it's not really always about, so the two, two parts is go deeper. Make sure you're going deeper, make sure you're always challenging them, that they're getting that richness. But they learn almost as much from those peer friendships, and they carry them through because they, they make them feel normal every day. Because their minds are racing at an extraordinary pace. And so those are the two big takeaways I took from my work with gifted and talented students.
All right, go ahead, Stephanie.
I'm a salesperson, not a teacher, camera, so Chase, what are you trying to say? I'm giving you my turn.
I just, I was just going to say a couple of things. I, I've worked at the admissions office at the University of Pennsylvania's Wharton School. And I, on an annual basis, do interviews for students on Long Island who are applying. I don't think that it would be appropriate for us to push rigor too much more than we already are in terms of the demand on our current IB students. I experienced nothing like that at Wharton, I experienced nothing like that at high school. I think we're pushing the students a little too hard in terms of their workload. And I think we think, need to think about quality as opposed to quantity. And what actual experiences we're putting our students in front of, and to try to improve those experiences instead of adding more. Second thing, I, I do data at the end of every school year with my seventh graders. It's about an eighty-question comprehensive, what was your year like, how can I improve, what, what can I do better for you? And very rarely have I ever gotten that they felt like the course was too easy or that they felt like they weren't challenged. And I think a lot of that comes from the parents, and it's parents' perceptions because maybe the kids are getting their work done early and they don't have as much homework or... But the, the general sentiment from the students that I've taught has not been that we don't have enough rigor in middle school.
I just, I, I actually agree that tracking at a young age is, is a little bit sketchy when they're defining who they are and, and defining those ceilings. I like those expressions, I agree with them wholeheartedly. And I think that the thing that struck me the most is when Chase was talking about his conversations with the IB teachers and them saying what, what we really need to do is to diversify the experiences that kids are having as opposed to maybe putting more on. And those diverse experiences, I think all kids can benefit from those diverse experiences, and some can take it further than others. And I, and I think that, I, I read that, that you sent me about the Every Student Succeeds Act. And I, I think it speaks to maybe a shift in the way that teachers are beginning to think about instruction. That it's their facilitators and the, you know, the things that you said, that students are driving their own learning and this sort of thing. And so that type of teaching lends itself really well for differentiation so that you don't necessarily have the need for, for tracking if, if, I mean, but if you're just presenting information and the speed at which kids can digest it is the driving force of who succeeds and not. Then of course, we want to separate them out. But if you've got these different types of experiences that don't limit kids, I think that, that'll, over time, will become less and less of an issue.
And I think we've had a transition in that type of instruction. We still have teachers that are transitioning and trying that instruction. But we've made a giant leap, I feel like, even since I've been here with that instruction, even going down from the middle school level and the experiences they're getting.
Somebody, I'm sorry, Chris, and I don't, please don't answer because I'm not looking for an answer here, nor, we might not have one. But when someone chooses to leave the district and de-enroll their child and go somewhere else, I assume we do the exit interview as to why?
No, they, they usually, they usually will, they usually will talk to us about the reasons that they're leaving. But I would surmise that they're not entirely being honest all the time. So if they're having, if, if they're leaving because they're having an unpleasant experience here, they're, they're not apt to tell me that all the time because it's just a confrontation or an uncomfortable conversation.
Because I, and again, I wasn't even looking for that much, sorry, here's why I'm leading where I'm going. I, I would assume that, or I could speak to the families that I know personally in the tenth and eleventh, the current tenth and eleventh grade, that I've watched from kindergarten and first grade come through. And they leave because of a social issue way more, there, there's more of, that girl was my friend yesterday and she's not my friend today, and blah, 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 and I'm out. And I have very rarely heard, we don't offer enough choices.
Yeah, I think that you, you hear it less at the high school, but I have heard the middle school piece off and on pretty consistently now for the better part of the twenty years I've been here. That there is this concern when kids get to the middle level about the richness of what they're doing. It's not necessarily acceleration per se, but the, whether or not what they're doing is really interesting and captivating them and keeping them motivated. And it's been a concern not only at Pearson, but at a lot of middle schools. If you go around and talk to middle school administrators, they're going to tell you that that's something that they're dealing with and have dealt with for years. So I think we have the conversations, and what comes out of those conversations, we don't know yet. But those are good conversations to have.
I, I left the district where my oldest, when she was in elementary school, was in their gifted program. I think it was a really bad thing. It created divisiveness with eight and nine-year-olds. And those that were in and those that weren't in, and kids feeling stupid and kids being teased because they're in it. And so I think we have to be really conscientious that there's all sorts of negative implications for those in and out. And as the kids get older, they're going to have less of those negative implications because we allow access to, to everybody. But I just think we have to be careful about.
I started, I started my career, the first four years I taught, I worked at PS eleven, which is the gifted and talented school in Chelsea. And they started accelerating kids in second grade. So when I talk about the ceiling comment, you know, I saw it firsthand. But that's not to say that there can't be, it can't be done thoughtfully, and there can't be opportunities for enrichment that make things more interesting. But you just have to be very thoughtful about how you do.
Well, it can't be just that they get more work. That's what we faced ten years ago was, oh, your daughter's bored, well, I'm going to give you her more homework that's more challenging. And she's like, great, now I got three hours instead of two.
But I mean, I think talking about the, the project, and it's, it, it, it needs to be more of a multidisciplinary approach. And the deeper thinking is what it is. It's not more thinking, it's a deeper level.
Now, what are we doing for, since, since the middle years program would have touched ninth and tenth grade? Because we're hearing a lot about the middle school, which is wonderful. What are we applying to ninth and tenth grade to fill in those gaps that we are not hitting with not going with that program? Or is that for another night?
For another night. But we've, but we've been having those discussions.
Okay. So another night, you'll tell us what's going on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I just, I think everybody's made really good points, and I think this is important conversation. But I think it's a good start to the conversation. And I think, you know, everyone seems, the, the diploma program seems to be overwhelmingly popular. That is a program that offers more rigorous coursework. As I understand it, it's open to everybody, but offers more rigorous coursework, but it's only for students in eleventh and twelfth grade. And so I think this is a good start to the conversation, and these are some great ideas. But we ought to continue to be talking about what other kinds of things we can be doing for kids who are in grade six through ten.
I just had a one, just a quick question. The plan, is that based on a specific curriculum model, or is that something you guys devised yourselves?
It's based on several experiences that I've gone through in my own education and in trying to weave them together and tie in all the different needs that we have. I, I have a, a vision of how this would work out, I haven't laid it out on paper yet.
Okay.
I like the name.
You guys didn't catch, Chase was very upset that you guys didn't catch, where is it?
I just happened to.
I think it's after.
It's after this?
Yeah.
Plant a seed in the bullet points, but nobody caught that. Oh, the bullet start with the, it's right there. And we didn't even mean to do that.
Well, I'm losing it.
Every bullet pays as the seed.
Learning was indebted, maybe.
Oh, oh.
Nobody caught it.
Nope. You're still with the pointer, right?
You know, why is the learning?
I know, the learning needed to be learned. The little things we care about.
So I want to commend you guys for, first of all, the progress that you've made in the middle school over the last few years, and then taking this by the horns and, and making it real. We really appreciate it, and, and we look forward to more reports and watching it take shape. Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board?
Great job.
Thank you. At this time, I, we have a couple of personnel actions that we felt warranted being put on this agenda simply because they are highly needed. So can I get a motion to approve personnel actions one and two?
Can you, I'm sorry, Diana, can you separate those?
Yep, can I get a motion to approve personnel action number one?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just have a question about the rate that they're paid.
Am I the only one? Like, really?
Yeah, yeah, right, you know.
It's crazy.
The board should do something about that.
Jen had a question.
I was just going to comment, that's a former Pearson valedictorian.
Oh, yeah. That's exciting.
Thank you for telling us that.
Raising the question about the rate they're paid, is this, is this consistent with the surrounding districts and what they pay for this similar position?
I think we did look at that about three years ago, and I think it was consistent. So I can, I can, I.
We can look at it again.
I won't be able to do it in the next few weeks.
I ask for two reasons. One, we want to compensate people fairly. And two, we know with our other substitute categories that when we pay less than the surrounding districts and they get a call from multiple districts, what district do they not come to? The one that's going to pay them twenty-five or fifty dollars a day less. So if we're going to be approving these, maybe you can approve them tonight. But I would approve with the caveat that I would want to confirm that we're not being, that we're competitive with surrounding districts. Otherwise, this is not going to solve our problem.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
No, I'm saying they're... Like, we appoint them, then they're, they're ours, we already got them.
No, they're substitute. They could be substitute, they could be, at least they're a substitute.
Oh, I see, so they're taking a substitution job over...
No, no, what I'm saying is, if you're like your substitute teacher, you, you can be in five districts and get the call from five districts at five in the morning, and choose which one you're going to.
I see, okay, sorry.
Same thing with bus drivers, same thing with custodians.
I, I, I mean, I recognize, obviously, we can't change anything per night, but is this something that we can look at in the future in terms of, because that for these, for this role just seems really low per day, and maybe there are other roles similarly where we need to adjust that?
We won't, because right now we don't.
No, no, I get it, I get it.
We need these people.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
We just don't have a business administrator right now, so pulling up those numbers, just give it a couple of weeks, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, no rush.
I just want to point out there's a typo, the effective date should be January ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Oh, thank you. Can you guys make corrections on your copies for both yours? Should be eighteen, not seventeen. Thank you, Victoria. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries? Can I get a motion to approve personnel action, oh, sorry?
I want to recuse myself from the...
Wait, 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 yes.
Hang on.
Can I get a motion to approve personnel action number two?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Alex.
I wanted to recuse myself. As well as from any discussion of pay for substitute persons.
All right, sounds good. Any other discussion?
Because you're related to one of the candidates.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
We're getting some great substitute girls, so this is...
That's it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion, abstained, yeah. Motion carries? All right, so the last thing on the agenda is just an update on the candidate appointment. I want to let everybody know that I appreciate them getting back to Victoria about what nights they were available to get this done. It is a little bit inconvenient that it's so quick after tonight's board meeting, that the only night that everybody was available was tomorrow night. I was hoping for later in the week, but tomorrow night it is. So what I was thinking, based on what I had heard at the last meeting, is that it will be in public, that all the candidates will come. There's seven that have put in their names, and we'll just put them in a little horseshoe shape. And we have some, I have replied to them, actually, Victoria did on my behalf, which I appreciate, that there will be given three minutes to make a statement that talks about, you know, what qualifications make them think they'd make a great board member, why are they, why are they choosing to put their name in the hat, you know, this sort of thing. And then at that time, we can ask them questions. And I figured I'd have a system to have them randomized when they sit. And then the first question will just, boom, 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 everybody answers question number one. And then question number two, we'll go to the second candidate and come all the way back around, and the third question, and so on, and, and...
So are you asking, I hope, only seven questions?
Well, we have the questions available on the drive. I would like to discuss that with the board, but I think that we should probably discuss privately so that they don't...
Fine, but I, I just, if you, we're lining everybody up all together, one big happy family.
Yep.
So think about what will happen, seven times seven is forty-nine.
I'm, yeah, that's why I'm hoping we're not asking a lot of questions.
Right, we need to, right.
Yeah.
Two suggestions, one, there's eight candidates, but only seven can come tomorrow night, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I would suggest that instead of giving them three minutes, giving them two minutes for an opener, which in two minutes, they can share a bit with us. I'm just trying to think of how we kind of get to the other questions versus the prepared. And with that many people, if it's three minutes and then some will go over, then all of a sudden, it's half an hour just for those...
I think that we do the paper...
I'm sorry.
Well, I, well, it's just one, the first suggestion is that we change it from three minutes to two minutes. We did tell them three minutes, and so if they prepared anything at this point, we're telling them for tomorrow night.
Then it's too late.
Yeah, and that's...
And then the other suggestion I have is just physically that, you know, if they're going to be lined up at a table, that we're lined up facing them so we can see them, and that they're lined up so that the camera can capture them. They don't need to see us, but to see the candidates. Just so, instead of having this U-shaped, I just think that if we can do it that way, then, you know, we all kind of have eye contact when it's happening, and it's not, this would be very, an awkward way to do it.
I, I was just thinking of setting it up with them, right, so we're all in a big circle with the cameras on them. That's what I was thinking, yeah.
But if we're in a circle, how, how would that work that the cameras are on and the...
I think she meant more like a rectangle.
What?
Don't worry about it, I think she's going to have the cameras on it. Is that what you're trying, that's what we got?
No one's going to be between them and the camera.
Correct, yes, no. And everybody will see the back of our heads, it's fine.
Because you won't capture their faces if we're sitting between them and the camera.
Yeah. Any other discussion about tomorrow night?
Yes, I'm sorry, you had eight members of the community come forward to put their name in. Seven are available tomorrow.
Correct.
Can I be clear, does that mean that the eighth withdrew his or her...
Did you ever hear back from that person?
He said he was not available that evening, and I said I would let you know.
But does that mean that that person understands, I'm all about my days are ticking, clear? So does he or...
You guys have to tell me how to respond to him.
Yeah, I think we have to be clear, just because you just said it. Does that person think they are no longer in the running, or...
I did state that, that the interviews were one night, that you guys...
And I was making, I assume we're going to make a decision tomorrow night, so if, if that candidate is not available...
So I'm just thinking we should make sure that we communicate that.
So what, well, either that or, you know, I mean, I feel, I feel badly for any candidate who had, you know, was not available, because this is very last minute, you know, who knows why that particular candidate is not available? But, but I'm assuming it's for a really legitimate reason. So I hate to think that anyone's discounted because their calendar didn't line up with the one night that we have available for this in a very short period of time. So do we want to instead ask if they want to send something to us that we can review tomorrow night in our meeting to at least give them an opportunity to share something? to at least give them an opportunity to share something with us? I just think that's fair.
Yeah, before we answer that question, the board's probably gonna discuss this for a while, if the administration would like to call it a night. I thank you so much for your presentation tonight.
I'm sorry, you need public.
No, I'm not adjourning the meeting, I'm dismissing the administrators. Have a good night.
Wait, hold on, someone else.
Yeah, the meeting's not over.
But you know what, do we want to allow public input too, and then have this, just so that we don't hold somebody up? I'm fine for, I'm, I'm.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor to allow public input now.
Number two.
Sure. So that they don't have to sit.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Alright, administrator's still dismissed. You guys do not have.
And this way we're not keeping.
Thank you so much for the middle years, it was great.
Excuse me, sorry, I'm sorry. I, give me one second.
You have to read me the rules again?
No, I have to vote on the motion on the floor. Can I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, state your name. Do you know the rules? Thank you.
Thank you so much for the middle years presentation. It was really great. We had a great middle years experience here. And there was lots of rigor.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
There was lots of rigor. When he did it, in the places that he did it, because if you guys have read The Teenage Brain or studied any Danny, Dan Seigle's stuff, you'll know that really, it's not the time to do that with them. It's the time to really have them learn about collaboration, and have them learn about mindfulness practice, and spirituality, and kindness, and all that good stuff. Okay, so here's the question, cause I haven't read a lot about this thing that's going on tomorrow night, but it seems fast, right? So it seems like we, we've sort of, okay, I know, not completely fast. It's been out there in the community. Alright, I want to know if it feels fast to you guys. If you guys feel like there's pressure and you have to make this decision, that's number one. And then the second question is, how come we can't know about the questions?
So we had, just to answer your two questions, we had laid out a timeline in December, and thought about all of our options, and decided that we wanted to appoint somebody at the next business meeting, have them sworn in so that we could move into the budget cycle. And so then, our district clerk surveyed the board members to find out when the board could get together, and it, not surprising to me, because I've been board president for a year and a half, it is extremely difficult to get all seven of us in one room unless it's a regularly scheduled board meeting, cause we all work our schedules around these meetings. But then to put in an extra meeting has been historically extremely challenging. So we were very limited in the nights that we could do it. Tomorrow night is not ideal, but it's the only night that we could all get together. What was your second question?
I wanted to know why we can't know the questions. I, I heard you say you were.
So one of the concerns that was brought up when we had this discussion was, some of the questions are very straightforward. Why do you want to do this, blah, 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 blah?
Do you live here?
Yeah, exactly.
In the district? That's already been taken care of.
That's embedded. That's embedded.
Okay.
But then other questions, there was some thought with some board members that they kind of want some authentic answers without having it be prepared in advance, like, you know, doing homework or trying to come up with kind of a canned response. They just wanted them to speak authentically on certain issues or thoughts. And so by that, we would not let the, we'd let some of the questions be known ahead of time, and some of them not.
And is tomorrow night sort of like a big reveal of the seven candidates that will be here? Or does, do we have, I was just at work all day, so I didn't read anything. Do we know that?
I don't think we've made public who's put their name in.
You should share it.
The deadline is that. Just because the deadline was this afternoon? First time I've seen you guys, hi!
Twelve noon was the cutoff.
Yeah, we don't make any decisions without each other in the room, so that actually hadn't come up as to whether we should publish those names or not. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and we can discuss that as a board.
Okay, thank you. So I make a motion that we read, that we ask our district clerk to read the names of who will, who's put their name in.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I'm sorry, I should have checked to see if there was anyone else.
Thank you. Yeah, leave it running, thank you.
I'm sorry, who just, who just.
Chris made a motion that you read the names. Susan seconded it. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just asked, is there any reason not to? Is anyone have a reason why we shouldn't read the names?
No.
No?
So I think we should, no?
Okay, alright. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, go ahead.
I can give you a bonus if you can pronounce them right.
There's some great names in there.
And just, just so I'm clear, I'm sorry, the cutoff was noon today. Okay.
Yeah, the last one I did receive was last night.
Okay.
Like eight o'clock. Um, Caleb Kirchfield, Michael Hayes, Yorgos, okay. I'm gonna let you do that one.
Yorgos.
Go ahead.
No, I did that's his last name.
Oh, I didn't even look. I, I figured you would stop at Yorgos.
Yorgos.
Sibiridis.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just blew that bonus, I knew where you were going.
Kate needs some spelling.
Lori Martson, Susan Schaefer, Tom McCarrollin, and Susan Kinsella.
Excellent.
And the one who is not able to move.
Gary.
Gary, yeah.
Your friend.
Your friend else.
So let's make a decision on what we want to do about Gary, cause he can't make it. Do we want him to send me the prepared statement and any other, like, I don't know. I'm gonna leave it up to you guys. You tell me what you want to do.
I thought Chris's suggestion was a good one. If he wants to submit something, we'll.
And then we can review it when we caucus after the public portion tomorrow, we can review that and have that be, help us with our informed decision.
Okay.
Just to be fair.
It also might be worthwhile, I don't know, with the view of having a condition in him, unless something has changed. My understanding is he actually stays in the city during most of the week. But that's not changed. Exactly. I don't, I don't know how he would make himself available for meetings, but, but maybe he, maybe that's changed, and. Okay, so Victoria, maybe you and I can chat for just a second, and then we'll reach out to him and see if he does want to still be considered for the position. And if so, is there something that he would like to submit on his behalf for us to consider? Is there a reason we can't do Thursday? Who, who can't make Thursday? It just feels like it gives the community a little more time. There was, there was other candidates that couldn't do Thursday.
And, and I, I did think that we were still rolling here. Note that it's, even though we say it's hard for us to get together on non-board nights, it's because we're on different committees. I don't want anybody, like, I've gotta go to two other meetings this week. Unless we're gonna cancel those meetings, we can't have a, so that's how we ended up here.
Well, I think some people in the community are frustrated too, because the, the meeting tomorrow night is, overlaps with a very important town-village meeting in Sag Harbor. And so I think there's some concerns there.
And what's that meaning?
I don't know what the, what the agenda is on that.
The other thing, I just had a question about how we're confirming residency, because just one of the candidates is just listed on Facebook as saying that they live in a different town. Victoria, do you want to talk about your process?
Okay, so there are several things that, that I did. One of them was to check.
Board.
Their, their.
Voter vote.
Board of Elections, South County Board of Elections. So everybody who has applied has not only registered with the Sag Harbor Board of Elections, but they've all.
I just want to warn everybody that it's a sheet of ice.
Yeah.
And you can't see it, so when you step outside.
Can you do something about that?
No, I can't, that's why I sent you that note when I got there.
Thank you for the one.
It's really bad. You know what?
I, I left Diana a message an hour before the meeting saying, even events have been called off in many districts because the prediction is it's gonna be dangerous.
Yeah, no, and I, I, that's why I gave you that note when I arrived, cause, I mean, I had been here earlier for the residency. Yeah. So, so let's, let's wrap up this conversation.
So, I'm sorry, so not only is South County Board of Elections, are they cleared to vote in Sag Harbor, but that dates, they have been twelve consecutive months. So in other words, they're all the twelve months. I also checked with the tax receiver in Southampton.
Didn't you see it? Did it come out? Okay.
How does that, how does that, how would that work though? Like, I don't, I.
Well, it's in East Hampton Town. Sag Harbor District is in East Hampton Town.
But they're, then they're covered under the Board of Elections.
Oh, right, okay. I didn't, I didn't know.
No, like, did all of them, they all, they all are cleared with South County Board of Elections. So I also had suggested to Diana to ask them those questions.
Yeah.
Are you a resident? Are you, you know?
But the steps that you've taken, or the steps that are take, that, that the district clerk takes every year in verifying candidates where they, where there's a public election as well.
I talked to him with other districts too, and South County Board of Elections is really the go-to place.
It's a litmus test.
Yes, that's a litmus test.
Okay.
And they've all passed, which is great.
Any other discussion about tomorrow night?
I'm just thrilled that we have so many people who are interested and willing, cause I think that, that just bodes very well for the process. So they, I want to say thank you to all those that put their name in.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I, it's unfortunate that it has to happen this fast, but I guess we, if it just closed today at noon, and the idea is to pick someone for next week, that really just leaves Tuesday.
That's two months, two months.
Am I right? It was also a question of coordinating the candidate's schedule, not just ours.
Absolutely.
I, I don't know why anybody feels like this is Russian. I saw a couple of, of people sending emails from outside in the community saying that. We knew Tommy John was leaving for months.
He's actually.
We, we discussed ad nauseam that we weren't gonna spend money on an election, we're not gonna make Katie, appoint someone even though it's in her right to do so, that we weren't gonna.
It's not our right to say that.
We could tell her.
It's our right to say that.
We could tell her, go pick somebody.
Okay, that it's in our right to decide that we want to appoint someone, then we said we were gonna make it open to the public, then we said we were gonna, so I don't see any remorse here.
Well, I mean, it would have been nice if we could have done it a week later, because, I don't know, maybe more people could have come. But I guess at the end of the day, we're gonna have to make the decision. The important part is that it gets to see the process.
But, but that was the feedback I saw, and that I got personally from several people, was that we didn't notify the public well in advance that tomorrow night was gonna be the night, and so people who would, who wanted to come. But people say that and then we have empty meetings every so often.
The letter did say the interviews will be held during this week.
Yeah, but it said a date range. Let me just throw one thing out. I, I mean, I think we have tried very hard to be more accessible, the whole issue with public input being flexible, et cetera, which I think is great. But I think in this case, you know, Stephanie, in fairness, you know, that discussion about exactly what we were doing here was the meeting right before break.
Right.
So people were leaving, out of town, they're focused on holidays, they're not focused on the school stuff. So in fairness, people just came back, and so for them, you know, it felt for you and for us that we had been doing this for a while, but for them, they're just hearing about today. So I understand why they're.
But the letter saying what we were doing really went out right away.
I, I understand that. I know I did, but it went right before break, and people are checked out.
But here's, here's the thing, even if, if somebody said, okay, it's a shame that we can't move this, we go back to the calendar, and the, the person, whoever it is, sits here until May twenty-second, third? Okay, so if you missed all month of January and don't swear them in until February, then it's even worse.
Yeah, I, I hear you, I hear you.
But also, don't forget, in the past, when the board has done this, they have done it in executive closed session.
Right, right.
So the fact that this is open is.
Which is great, which is great.
The only disadvantage to less people tomorrow, you want to move, and if it snows, by the way, we'll have to move it, is that maybe one of the candidates that is elected will step up and run. And that they would be exposed to that person now. But in reality, whoever sits here in the Tommy John seat, if they choose to run, is gonna have tremendous access as they campaign for the actual seat again. So.
The, I think, I think the other thing, it was, it was, I agree with you, it was corrected, was the original email that went out today didn't reference what the meeting was about, and, and didn't have a link to the agenda. When it was brought to the attention of, I think, of, of the district, another email went out that was actually much more explicit, and was better. So I think there was just also a lesson learned. When we communicate on this, let's make sure we communicate effectively, cause the first email was ineffective, which just got people's, people's back a little bit. Yeah, so.
And we do have, like, again, this is, you know, like, we have an IT department with two people down. So, you know, like, that's, like, that's when that, that you have that crushing moment where they're just trying to get something done without.
But, but, but this also speaks to a communication process, which I think is a, a discussion for a different night, but I wouldn't rely on your tech department to write those kinds of emails. They should email them out, but that, they're not, they shouldn't be crafting what the content.
No, no, but when he, when we, when we traditionally, for four years now, when we send out an agenda, or to send out a reminder, the agenda's always attached, and the agenda stated very articulately. And I overdid it when I sent. I said, now we're gonna put what the purpose is right in there.
But yeah, I think, I think we've had a bad practice, because just send, just sending an email out saying, look at the attached agenda, is a bad communication practice. As Susan will probably tell you, you, when you send that out, you want to have a headline of core subjects included, list them, and then attach.
Chris, no, our practice for four years changed in the last two months just, just because of transition. For four years, it's been, we send out the e-blast with the link right in there.
No, no, but, but that's not what I was suggesting.
I'm gonna save the, the conversation for communication for another night, because I do think it's a bigger issue, and I don't think we need to solve that tonight.
No.
Can I just raise two other things that I want to raise, I'm concerned about. One is, I had, in the past meeting, had raised the opportunity of the public getting to ask questions, and the reason I had liked the newspaper format was because anybody has an opportunity to ask questions. So I just want to throw that out there, and how we might make that work. I'm gonna pause right there. Are you making a motion? Well, I'm, I'm throwing out, you know, how we do this, and the second thing is, we didn't anticipate this number of candidates, which is great, but that really does, how are we gonna address the efficiency then? So let's, let's do one at a time. The first suggestion is that we take questions from the public. My personal view is that it sounds like a great idea, but ultimately, I'm concerned about time, and I'm ultimately concerned about who gets to decide which questions get asked and which ones don't. This is the board's decision, and I think the board should ask what the board needs to know to make the decision, and then in a couple of months during the election cycle, we'll have a more public exchange. So that's my own personal view. Just real quick, we've got two opposing views on public asking questions. I want to make sure everybody's heard, so I can get the will of the board as to which direction we want to go. Go ahead.
I mean, I, I like Susan's idea in theory, but I think it's gonna create just mechanical difficulties. We don't know who's gonna be here and who's not, and I agree with Diana, at the end of the day, we made a decision for a number of reasons not to have an election, so I think it's our decision, and we should be asking the questions.
Right, but you do it, what I was saying is, the way the paper does it, so it's not like it's a free-for-all where. I understand, but we, we understand your position. I'm trying to get the position of others.
Well, that's helpful, actually, to hear, so.
Yeah, do you see what I'm saying? Like, it's that we're still determining.
No, I, I, I understand your point, but again, it's not an election. These aren't candidates. I wish people would stop calling them candidates. They're.
They are candidates.
They're candidates.
They're not. You're, they're cand, you're a candidate for, they're, they're.
Well, you know what?
We digress.
I'm sorry.
I can mean to derail you.
Applicants, applicants.
Applicants, thank you.
Applicants, I've been calling them.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think that would totally extend the process and overblow it, and I think we should just stick to our questions. If they want to run for the board, then Catherine will be asking them questions in Pearson in two months.
Steph, you want to win?
They are. The quicker we get it over with tomorrow, the better off we are, because they are substitutes standing up to fulfill Tommy John's term, and we're grateful for that, but the public ultimately is not voting. Therefore, we'd be here for two days if we let everybody ask questions. And if you don't have the paper moderating, Susan, the questions that you can get could blow up in our face.
And it's, it's nine o'clock, and it's tomorrow, but I don't, we're gonna tell everybody now to submit a question about tomorrow?
Okay, can I, I'm gonna wait.
Win, win.
I, I, I have to respectfully disagree with most of what I've heard. As PTA president, I used to help run the meet the candidates night with the paper, and the questions that every year were asked by the paper are very similar to the ones that we have, and yet occasionally, there was a question from the community that added some really dimension and texture to how the community could look at the candidates, and I would think that they could bring that to us. The process wasn't that someone writes on a card and then it automatically was asked. There was somebody who reviewed the cards.
Right, so who's gonna bet?
Let me finish. I don't know at this late date, we can identify someone who we would feel could be neutral and do that effectively, but I do think the idea holds a lot of merit, because it also creates an opportunity for the community to participate. They're not deciding, but they can ask a question that they may feel is important for us to know the answer to, to make a better decision. So I think there is merit in this, but I don't know at this late date if we could find somebody who could neutrally do that.
Maybe there's a way, sorry to interrupt, but I just, for what Chris and Susan were talking about, is there a way to just tell whoever's here, or tell them in advance, that they can submit questions and then the board members can look at them, and if we wanna ask one of them, we could just ask one?
That's exactly what I was proposing, but.
I didn't understand that one.
Yeah, that's exactly the way they do it with the paper. They, they write their question on a card, it's submitted to the moderator. And what I'm suggesting is then, it gets submitted to the board or whatever, any one of us, and then we can determine whether that's a question that we ask.
But if.
Because then they feel like they have some buy-in.
Because I think a lot of people have made good points, also the timing of it. What if we, I don't, because I like Chris's idea of doing it to two minutes instead of three. And one, instead of just everybody getting the exact same question, everybody comes up and they get one question from each board member.
They have to have the same questions.
Why?
In other words, we can't evaluate them evenly, because you know what?
Is that true though? I don't know.
It's like an interview, it's an interview.
But I've interviewed eight candidates for a position and I didn't ask them all the exact same question.
Right, but we, remember we did this, because if you say Steamstem, Bosis, Tash, and they're unfamiliar with the.
The one.
The one, that's, you, you can't start going.
And don't, we're not asking questions like Ca, like, like the paper asks.
Understood.
We're asking like generic interview questions, we're not asking very specific.
Right, but, but what's.
But why not?
So, so, I, I would like to think about the questions, um, and, but, I think, case in point, the reason we need this seat filled is it sounds like, what I'm hearing, is that the board is split right now as to whether we're gonna take suggestions from questions from the audience.
I thought it made sense if everybody's gonna get to ask their own question, like, and, and then I could look at the, or Susan or you could look at the questions and say, oh, there's one from the audience I'd like to ask, but.
Right.
But are you gonna be able, could you, could you pick out, let's say we give everybody an index card when they walk in?
Right.
And you have to quickly look at these questions. And it says, dear candidate, I understand you are pro-Turf and I wanna shoot you because. Are you able to draw that away before you ask that?
Yes. I'll, I'll answer, because I've been in that position of getting a stack of cards and going through them and then handing them to Brian at the, at there, so I actually had to do that. Guess what? Not once, it, I, I did it for many years, not once did I ever get something that was personal to one candidate, not once, now, it could happen, if it happens, you just put it aside.
Yeah.
But it doesn't happen. Now, most of the time, they were just repetitive on one or two topics, but it was very valuable. I, you know, the more we can include the community, the better, I'm just gonna jab at that.
So, so, this is, so I'm, I'm gonna follow Robert's rules right now. And what I'm hearing is that the motion on the floor is that we take questions from the audience. That, am I understanding?
Can I just?
That they are, that they can give us cards, any one of us can take the card and use that as our question, or say, oh, you, we've got one from the audience, this is a good question, you know?
And is there a second for the motion?
I second it.
Buy-in.
I second it.
So, so there's a second for the motion on the floor?
I have a question.
Point of information?
Point of information, I think we first have to decide, what is the larger procedure? Is the procedure that, um, every candidate is gonna be asked the same questions?
That's what we agreed to at the last meeting.
Okay, and if that, okay.
And that's, and that's how they express themselves as well.
And then you start with a different person each time.
And if that's the case, what would be the procedure for submitting questions and who would decide?
Let's decide, let's wait till the motion passes before we decide on the procedure. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, does anybody else wanna add in on the discussion? All those in favor of having the audience submit cards?
For consideration.
Submit cards for consideration?
Yeah, it's not that you have to pass them all, if they have, they have the ability to do that.
Agree.
Can I ask a question though? Is that, so they would submit questions and then we would decide whether we're gonna ask them?
Somebody has to vet.
Yes, it's not like they get used, but.
It's not like every single one you can get asked.
But it's an opportunity to submit them.
Exactly.
I don't see any downside to that.
Thank you.
I don't need it.
Alright, all those in favor? Alright, all those opposed? Alright, motion carries, we'll take questions from the audience. Is there anything else that you guys need from public before we move into exec to look at the questions?
So, I, I'm just trying to understand this, we're gonna, we're gonna have questions, I'm sorry. We're gonna have a list of questions that we're gonna ask.
I'm sorry, Katie, yeah.
And we may alter that based on.
We may supplement.
We may supplement it based on questions from the public.
No, I thought we were gonna go through the seven questions, which goes, starting each person with the pre-slog.
I'd like to talk about the questions.
Oh.
But we do that in exec.
But I don't want them, I don't want the questions to be in the paper, so we have to go.
Correct, I know that, but I thought that that was the, if that's the way we go, seven questions predetermined by the board.
We didn't say how many, we didn't say how many.
I did before, because there's seven candidates and you want each person to go first, and then you take your open questions in a rotating basis from the, from the public.
But until we sit down and review the questions and decide what we think is important, I don't think we're in a position to say how many it is right now, I think we have to go in exec and review the questions.
That's fine, but I thought that those questions were in addition to the open ones that you're gonna collect.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying in the camera.
Yeah.
Okay.
It supplements it.
There's questions we know we want to ask.
Okay.
Alright.
I just, I voted yes, because I want the meeting tomorrow to extend into Wednesday.
I think we have to have.
Are we off? Is that off?
You have to have.
I don't touch the camera.
I'm in the bathroom.
You need a motion to go on to executive session.
Before we do that, can I, can I quickly raise one other thing? I, I know you guys are having a conversation, you can. Okay, is that, um, I, I do think that it would be good to address our call system when we have a snow day, because I, I heard from many people, like, and I know that this happened to us, we got a call at five-ten and then at six o'clock on all our devices, so it wasn't just that I was in the board and I got it, my husband got it in his cell, we got it home, and so I don't think we need to have a call system that calls twice within an hour.